Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Yountville Town Council. It is Tuesday, July 6th at 6:00 PM. For those of you joining us for the very first time in council chambers this evening, you'll find the agenda and all the supporting documentation in the little plastic bins on the wall, right there where you walked in by the door. This session is being broadcast live on Channel 28, and it will be rebroadcast on Friday at noon. It's also streaming live on our website, www.townofyountville.com. Just you can go there and watch this session at a later date. And I think one more little housekeeping item before we get started. If you would please turn off your cellphones and pagers, that would be greatly appreciated. May we have the roll, please?
Councilmember Dutton?
Here.
Councilmember Chilton?
Here.
Councilmember Mola?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunbar?
Here.
Mayor Sossaman?
Here. Please join me in the pledge.
My pledge wishes to comply with the United States of America and the Free Republic for which it stands, and one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Thank you. Item four, closed session report. We have no report. Item five, adoption of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes or corrections?
Move for adoption.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. None, that motion carries. Item six is public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter that is not listed on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing nothing from anyone, I will close the public comment and move to item seven, consent calendar. Are there any changes or corrections to tonight's consent calendar?
Mayor, I would request that we have a separate vote on item 7B.
7B?
B, have them voted.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd request a separate vote on 7D.
Anything else?
I make a motion to approve consent calendar items 7A and 7C.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. None, that motion carries. Item 7B, Councilmember Chilton?
7B?
Yeah, 7B, didn't she say?
Let's ask for a separate vote.
Separate vote?
I'll move that we adopt item 7B from the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Chilton voted no on that item. Item 7D, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just wanted to pull this item so that I could abstain from the June 1st special meeting minutes, since I stepped down from the nonprofit grant discussions and awards due to a conflict with the fact that I sit on the Yountville Arch Committee.
Very good.
Motion to approve item 7D.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. None, that motion carries. And the record will reflect that Vice Mayor Dunbar is abstaining from the June 1st meeting minutes.
Special meeting.
Special meeting minutes. Okay, presentations. First item on the list is a presentation of proclamation and recognition of Parks and Recreation Month, and we have a rather lengthy proclamation which will be submitted for the record and presented to the Community Services Director. Item B, presentation by Jim Shoup, Yountville representative, on the Napa County Measure A Financial Oversight Committee. Jim?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I've got to apologize tonight for bringing a report to you that is three pages long. Normally, I confine my reports to one page, so I apologize for the extra two pages. If you saw the report coming from the Flood Oversight Committee, you'd understand why I cut it down as much as I did. I've got to comment on the quality of the accounting and the reporting on this particular operation, because it is a very large financial operation, and the people running it are doing a tremendous professional job in accounting and maintaining the records. The records that I present to you tonight, I've given, are a year behind. That's how long it takes them to put the records together. And very quickly, the Measure A revenues that have been received by the county for the first 11 years are $217,962,000. Yountville's share of that, 3.8 percent allocation, is $2,668,326. The other revenues coming into that pot are state and federal revenues of $93 million, pardon me, $96 million, other revenues of $886,000, for total flood district revenues of $315,198. The expenditures, the non-flood expenditures countywide are $72,539,000. Yountville's non-flood expenditures are $62,818. Now, non-flood expenditures are expended for operation, administration, and other things, not flood projects. Flood project costs, the countywide has spent $183,936. Yountville's share of that for the one project that we have completed is $1,547,000. So the total expenditures countywide are $256,475. Yountville's share of that, of those expenditures, are $1,610,000. The surplus available as of June 30th, 2009, countywide is $58,765,000. That means that they have that much money to spend on future projects. Yountville's share of that is $1,570,000. So that tells you where we are, that we've got $1,570,000 that is available for future projects for Yountville. Yountville projects completed, the town of Yountville completed a flood barrier project in 2004, a total of $1,610,000 in Measure A funds have been expended. Other projects of interest to the town of Yountville are the restoration of the Rutherford Reach of the Napa River, and I can go into detail on that if you'd like, but it's available there. It's more of a county project than anything else, but it does impact the town of Yountville. The second one is the Oakville Crossroad to the Oak-Nole Avenue. It's an ongoing project. That's another situation where it is a countywide project, but it has a major impact on the town of Yountville. I've given you a list of the completed flood control projects through 2008. The components under construction, starting in the year 2011, are the bypass rail bridge relocation project, which is kind of a controversial project, I understand. The bypass excavation, there's a list of projects that are in progress, the east side flood wall, Tulakka to Third Street, Tulakka Pump Station, west side flood wall, the Imola Detention Basin, flood wall in levees north of Oxbow, and the Sasquatch Detention Basin. Now, there's nothing on that list for the town of Yountville, and, you know, I see an opportunity there for the town of Yountville to investigate areas that these funds could be of benefit to the town of Yountville. When I accepted this position from the council, my explicit instructions were to come back and tell you what's going on. I hope I've done that with this report tonight. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Council, have any questions for Jim? Thanks, Jim. Item C, presentation by Dave Whitmer, Napa County Agricultural Commissioner, regarding the European Grapevine Moth.
Thank you, Mayor Sossaman, and members of the council, and town staff. I really appreciate you taking some time out of your busy schedule to have me here this evening to spend just a few minutes with you. And I have a presentation that I've put together that's very brief, but hopefully will give a little bit of background on this important issue. In September of 2009, we discovered that we had a new invasive species in Napa County that was affecting wine grape vineyards in the county, largely in the Oakville and Rutherford areas, although there is a small infestation out on East Third Avenue that was detected at that time. What we're talking about is a moth that the larvae does the damage, as is the case in most of these kinds of pests, and it's very specific to the flowers and the fruit of grapes, which makes it a great concern for us here in the county. I've got a presentation that kind of outlines, maybe we'll go to the next slide. Thank you. So, the adult moth lays single eggs. Next slide, please. The eggs hatch into these larvae, they go through several different instars, and as I mentioned, that's where the damage occurs, and then finally, in terms of life cycle, it pupates, and typically does that underneath the bark of the grapevine. You can see the scale here, that's the tip of a pencil. So we're talking about a very small insect, about a quarter of an inch long, as the adult moth. Next slide. The damage that occurs is, as I mentioned, on the feeding of this larvae on the flowers and the fruit of grapes. So what you have are photographs on the left-hand side of the slide of the, those are flower buds, and you have the larvae actually feeding on those flower buds, so you have a reduction in yield that occurs as a result of that, plus some mechanical damage, so you end up with a poor set of the crop. And later in the season, the next slide if we could, third generation damage really causes some significant problems with the quality of fruit. These eggs are laid by the adult female in the third generation singly on the berries of these grapes, and after voration, or berry softening, that larvae burrows directly into the berry and feeds. And so it not only causes a real critical problem with the quality of that fruit, but it also takes with it bacteria, fungi, and other things that end up spoiling that bunch from a wine-making perspective. What I really am interested in your understanding is that this is a really devastating pest to the county of Napa and to our wine grape industry. I'm hoping that I can help your citizens and you with coming to understanding of what this pest is, the biology, and some of the information. We currently have a four-pronged attack against this pest in the county. The first thing for us to do was really to try and identify exactly where it is and where it isn't. We have a trap that we're using that uses the insect's pheromone, and it's very effective at determining where this thing is. So far, we've found it in most of the wine grape-growing areas of Napa County. Not in high populations in all cases, and some, it's very, very small, single moths and traps, but in the core areas, as I mentioned, in Oakville, Rutherford, and East Third Avenue out in the Coombsville area east of Napa, some fairly significant populations. Second thing was, we worked with our partners in the scientific community to determine a course of action, a treatment program, and I've been very vocal with the wine grape industry in Napa County to say, "Look, we've come a long way to become more sustainable in the way that we grow grapes." And now is not the time for us to abandon that sustainability. In fact, it's the time for us to embrace it and figure out a way, from a sustainable standpoint, to deal with this pest. Growers are using insecticides to treat for the larvae, but they're doing so with materials that are very soft on the beneficial organisms that are out there, very toxic against the early instar larvae of European Grapevine moth, but they're not affecting other species. And we have designed a part of the program that will allow those growers who want to remain certified organic producers to be able to do so. Third part of the program is a quarantine, a regulatory component of the program that's going to be fairly onerous on growers. We don't want to spread this thing around within Napa County, and we're also being held to some pretty high standards by the State of California and the federal government to not make this somebody else's problem by spreading it outside of Napa County. And the fourth is what I'm doing right now, which is education and outreach, just trying to make sure that people are aware, and that we're enlisting the support of our citizenry, because I'm a firm believer and have witnessed, in fact, that folks step up in a big way in this county when there's a problem, and when you are clear about what you need them to do. We're going to be sharing much more information with the people of the county of Napa in the future. Next slide, if you would, please. And so what I'm interested in doing is in trying to, you know, make sure that you were in the loop on what was going on, that you had the opportunity to ask me some questions, to see me face-to-face, and for us to be able to work together on this. Because it's so focused on flowers and fruit of grape, I think we have an opportunity here. But as you know, there's many residential plantings within the town of Yountville and other communities in the county where grapes is a fairly common thing to have in a yard. We're probably at some point in time in this process going to need to deal with European Grapevine moth in those situations. But again, one of the solutions that can be a very viable solution in those areas is to strip the flowers and the fruit of grape and not allow this insect to become established in those areas. Not to take the plant, but to take the flowers and the fruit. Now, some people will say, "Wait a minute, I use that fruit. I wanted to use that fruit either for personal consumption, or for home wine making, or whatnot." And we would certainly be helping them with organic solutions to control if that was something that they chose to do. So with that, I'd answer any questions you have about this. And then I perhaps have another item for a future agenda that might be more applicable on your agenda at a later time on tonight's agenda.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions today?
Margie? Is this moth susceptible to Bacillus thuringiensis?
Yes.
Okay, so are they going to use that?
That is being used currently by organic producers in the county as one of two materials that are registered for use against this, to be able to maintain those OMRI-certified organic programs. The other material being Entrust, which I believe is a spinosid product.
Okay, so the larvae and the adult are both susceptible?
The adult of European Grapevine moth and other moths is not susceptible to BT. BT has to be used with very specific timing against the really early instar, the very young larvae. They have to feed on Bacillus thuringiensis and get it into their system in order for it to have the effect.
So just the larvae, then?
We're really focusing on the larvae.
Okay, thanks.
Any more questions? Vice Mayor?
What's the status of the Glasswing Sharpshooter? Is this another pest on top of that pest?
Absolutely. We're still maintaining our, and that may be the last time I was before you, was to really talk about our Glasswing Sharpshooter program. We're going on 10 years, a decade, of keeping Glasswing Sharpshooter out of the county. We continue to inspect all nursery stock, incoming nursery stock for life stages, and in fact, over that decade, we've found many shipments to be infested with the egg masses of Glasswing Sharpshooter, and we've removed them or shipped the plant material back. But to date, we have not fought a population of Glasswing Sharpshooter within Napa County, something I'm very proud of.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thanks, Dave.
The final issue that I might bring to your attention is, I'm also kind of spearheading a local food effort, and we held a discussion at the Napa Valley Expo in Napa on the end of April, April 29th. We had over 300 people who attended and did a town hall meeting there to discuss some of the things we could be doing. The Board of Supervisors has indicated that they would like to proceed with the formation of a local food council that would be, make recommendations to the county ag commissioner on issues of local food distribution, production, those kinds of things. And so we would certainly be seeking a representative for the town of Yountville on such a council, and the makeup of this local food council would also include members from the ag community, folks from farmers markets, and restaurant industry, et cetera. So maybe as a future agenda item, if you'd like to have that discussion, and forward the name of someone who might represent your town, love to have the town of Yountville represented on the local food council.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item nine, public hearing, Yountville Inexpansion Affordable Housing Project. Do we have a staff report?
Madam Mayor, because of my residence being within 500 feet of this property, I will have to step down.
Okay. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Dutton is stepping down with a conflict on this item. Staff report?
The farmhouse that is the subject of this item on the agenda was part of the overall Yountville Inexpansion and Affordable Housing Project. That consisted of the expansion of the inn, 25 affordable housing units, and the preservation of the farmhouse that was utilized for three of the workforce housing units and with a recreation and laundry room. Those elements of the project were included in the development agreement that was agreed to between the developer and the owner, and which included things such as the construction of the pedestrian pathway, the realignment of Champagne Drive, and other infrastructure elements. It described the total concept and idea for the project. Since that original approval, the applicant has requested several amendments to the project that had been brought before you. Those included the addition of a spa, a modification of the landscaping and fencing plan, removal of the heritage oak, and this component of the affordable housing of the project that involved moving two of the three workforce housing units from the farmhouse and relocating them in building two, and that was approved by council in December of '09. The second part of that request was to raise and reconstruct the farmhouse, but the decision on this part was continued because the council determined that the farmhouse represented a potentially historic resource, and it directed the preparation of, an evaluation of historic significance. The professional firm of carrying company was selected to do that evaluation, and we received the final historic resources evaluation report in May of this year. That report concludes that the farmhouse is significant, or potentially significant, for three different reasons. One is for the association to William Gibbs. Another was an example of a vernacular farmhouse, but there was an indication that additional research or surveys were needed to finalize that conclusion. And the third was for its association with the incorporation of the town, but there was a recommendation that the farmhouse be reevaluated when that association became 50 years old, which would be in 2015. So staff is recommending that you accept the conclusion of the report that the farmhouse is significant for the association with William Gibbs, and assuming that the conclusion is suggested, accepted, staff is suggesting a new condition of approval that formalizes some of the discussion in the staff report and implements the conclusion of the consultant's report. And the condition that staff is recommending is that the farmhouse shall be preserved in accordance with Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation of historic buildings, and with plans subject to third-party review and verification for conformance to these standards. Like I said, that formalizes the concept that was raised in the report, but it now includes it as a condition. And going in this direction would be consistent with the applicant's original plans to preserve the farmhouse, which were included in the original approval of the project and in the development agreement. The consultant, Alice Carey with Carrying Company, is here tonight to answer any questions you have about that report. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Council, have any questions for staff at this time? Councilmember Chilton?
I'm assuming there's, I didn't see any. There's no changes between the staff reports and the last meeting that was continued in this one?
No.
Any questions? Okay. Before I open up the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward, we did receive a letter from the Preservation Napa Valley, concurring with the Carrying Company report and making some additional recommendations from Director Wendy Ward, and I don't know that they're here tonight, but, okay, okay. Is the applicant here? Do you have anything to add? George?
Counselor, staff, my name is Scott Greenwood-Miner. I represent the Yountville Inn. I'm an attorney with Gauv and Maier in Napa. I would start out by commenting that the affordable housing component of the development agreement originally only required five affordable housing units, and that the Yountville Inn is building 25. I think that's an important place to start. With regards to the report, we respectfully disagree with the report. We don't believe that it's a historical structure. We believe the structure is extremely compromised, and the 2003 FEMA report, which had the concurrence of the state historic office, stated that it was not significant. Times were different then, but Yountville worked closely with FEMA in the preparation of that report. Nothing has really changed since then, other than a development agreement was put in place and the Yountville Inn is expanded. With regards to the report, I think the threshold issue is this report has 46 footnotes to it. It's very carefully documented, except that there's nothing in the report to link this house to ever having actually been owned by William Gibbs. I had our law firm start a search, which we were not able to finish as of the time of this meeting, to find out if there was ever a recorded grant deed that states that it was actually owned by Mr. Gibbs. All we see is a grant deed from George Gibbs, his son, to the, I'm blanking on the name, the Skinner's. That's a hole that needs to be plugged at the very least, because it would be a shame to claim that this is a historically significant farmhouse on the basis of its relationship to Mr. William Gibbs, if there is no relationship to Mr. William Gibbs other than his son owned it. Following up on that, the Vartek structural engineer found that the house is unsafe. I've walked the structure with the Yountville Inn's construction manager. Unsafe is probably an understatement. It's extremely compromised in its current condition. At best, bottom floor and top floor, we're talking about 1,300 square feet, maybe 1,350 square feet of usable space. But to restore this house to its original condition and start from there with preservation, 1,300 square feet, you have to move the stairway indoors. The kitchen's not appear to be original, and it's fire-damaged. The floors all have to be replaced. There is no foundation to the structure whatsoever. You can just, if you're not careful, you'll just step right through the floorboards. It leans two to three inches to the south. That's just where you start. If you strip away all of the nonhistoric additions to this structure, you don't have enough square footage for the purposes currently approved in the development agreement as modified. In other words, you can't get an affordable housing unit, an adequate laundry room for the entire facility, an adequate recreation room, and some office space for management of the affordable housing unit. So in some form or another, something needs to be stripped away and then added. I would add that doing that, given the timing of the report that needed to be prepared and that we're here in July, the Yountville Inn expansion is looking to be completed in September, and 180 days thereafter, the affordable housing started, or opened, excuse me. The renovation, restoration process for the farmhouse would take longer than that six-month period to get done. That's the construction manager's best estimate. He has some experience with restoration. It would be a better idea, from the Yountville Inn's perspective, that the farmhouse be torn down and that the best-looking replica ever be constructed in its place, something that will last a long time, something that will adequately meet the needs of the project and of the future inhabitants of the project. And that's where we believe- And that's where we believe the focus should be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter this evening? Can you state your name for the record, please?
My name's Susan Hershey. Do I give my address as well? All right. So to the Honorable Mayor and City Council members of the town of Yountville, Preservation Napa Valley is pleased that Carrying Company has found the Gibbs House to have historical significance. With these findings, the town and developer have a verifiable asset to work with. The in-depth study of Carrying Company revealed the importance of the Gibbs House so that any future action concerning the house should be done in an appropriate and sensitive manner. With that said, and encouraging the city to best steward the Gibbs House and the Yountville 's future, Preservation Napa Valley would like to recommend the following: to condition that the original plans for the house to act as a historical focal point for the new development be retained. Conformance to those original plans means the house would stay in its current and original location, not to be moved for the convenience of the developer. With the establishment of the Gibbs House as historically significant, condition the applicant to conform to the Secretary of Interior standards for rehab of historic buildings with a monitor upon completion. And ask the applicant, in an effort to both educate visitors and locals, to design a plaque so that the history and significance of the structure may be realized by all. This action may be deferred until Yountville Town incorporation details as they relate to the house are determined, and this may initiate development of a citywide landmark plaque house program, which again are valued both by the locals and by visitors here. PNV recommends going beyond Carrying Company's recommendations of a farmhouse inventory to secure a thorough inventory of the historic resources of Yountville. This crucial document will be the planning department's go-to document with any time a historic resource competes with development in this town. The document will expedite all development processes as they relate to resource and sequel rehab standards and much more. And we look forward to the completion of this development and the architectural stewarding of the Gibbs House. Thoughtful rehabilitation and centralized inclusion will reveal a chapter of Yountville's history for all who come across this whole building. And please let us know if we may be of assistance in regards to any aforementioned recommendations. And these are the words and letter that was submitted to you all by Wendy Ward, Director of Preservation Napa Valley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, Counsel, staff. I'm speaking briefly for Margaret Jefferson and I. Margaret can't be here this evening, but together we composed this letter, speaking to the farmhouse. Preserving our history requires help from many people. We hope the town council will help save this farmhouse. The owners of the Yountville Inn are indeed fortunate in that they are the custodians of this little piece of Yountville's heritage that has endured for more than 150 years. It has stood the test of time, the storms, the years. It's a record of our past. Some might say that the farmhouse is too modest to matter, but it is the modest buildings that tell us the most about who we once were. The Gibbs farmhouse shows us about the ordinary yet extraordinary lives of the Yountville pioneers. This house tells us something about how Yountville became the town it is today. It is important to preserve our heritage for our future generations. Please let's start with this simple, hand-built farmhouse, because it tells us about our past, and keeping it shows that we care about preserving our history and the character of our town. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else comment on this matter? Yes, ma'am.
Donna Heine, Gateway Estates Homeowners Association. The Association would like to thank the council, Mr. Altamira, and Carrying Company for all the months of effort to determine the fate of the farmhouse. The report was a very interesting one. Reading it was enlightening in many respects. I learned things that I hadn't known, obviously, because I'm not quite that old. I think that we feel that the plaque, not I think, it was the majority opinion of our homeowners' association that the farmhouse is worthy of a plaque or other suitable designation of its past contribution to Yountville. I wish that George Washington had slept there. It would have made it a lot easier for all of us. However, the residents of Gateway Estates, having lived with the building, are in agreement that replacing the structure is preferable to restoring it. We have lived with the dirt and dust too long. We would like to see workforce housing completed, our roads, and our lives returned to normal. When you drive past the house, on many occasions, if I hit a bump, I think, oh dear, it listed. Is it going to stand up? I think the only thing holding it together at this point is the fireplace. Thank you again for your due diligence in your roles of mayor and councilpersons. Let's start all over again with a new building and a recognition plaque.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Good evening, George Altamira. Looking at the building, if it had any bones to it, I'd be the first one to restore it. If it had any kind of bones at all, maybe we'd be here to move it over, do this, that. The building is shot. It was added on so many times. When we first purchased the property, there was leaning twos in the side, leaning there. There's very little left of the house itself. As far as trying to come up and try and wiggle on housing, fair housing and all that, I think the mayor was the only one here. When we had to build five units of workforce housing and people's housing, only five units I had to do it. And I stood up here, because the town needed 68 units to meet their quota, and nobody was coming forward for units for that. And I got up here, and I don't want to be patting it back, but I gave 25 units that night, and everybody was so happy that night. I mean, we're not here to try and beat up two, three units. We'll do whatever we have to do. That house is basically shot. I mean, when you hit a house like that, you could get all kinds of reports. I could go hire five more people that'll say, forget it. If you get an architect that draws a home and you show it to five other architects, they'd say, this wasn't good. You should have had windows like this, show this. They always critique it, and they make it end up exactly where he wanted it to begin with. We paid for that report, and I'm sure we had a good feeling that what was going to happen here in the hills which is here, but the bottom line is, we wouldn't do something if it was really good. If it was a good home, and it was just, there's very little to that house. If you walk through it, it just shakes, and it's just, and I realize, person say, well, you could lift something here, put a new foundation, do this, this, tear the walls off that are all rotten, and put new walls. It'll never be that house again. That house saw its days. There are so many more great houses in Yountville, but that house has just been rickety and added on and added on. If you go there and you look at the back wall, it's been added on so many times, it's not even a house that was here that many years ago. So consequently, I'd like the council to work with us, and we, as we were trying to work with them, when we did the wall together, I didn't want the wall there. Everybody knows that those years then. I gave into the wall because maybe 10 people in the back, and some of the councilors said, George, we need the wall. At that time, the council, in partnership with FEMA, did the whole job together. We spent money for the wall, the town of Yountville. At that time, they said, the house is insignificant. They did their study, whatever they did, it's insignificant. And all at once, we want to do something, it's significant. It doesn't change, and since 2005, it either was or it wasn't. And they said it wasn't. So otherwise, if they said it was, the town and FEMA would have had to buy the house, move it probably, or do this and that, and it costs a lot of money. We were nice. We didn't get a penny, if you remember. We didn't ask for any money whatsoever to give up our property, because everybody said, we need the wall, George. I'm sorry, and thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Alice Carey from Carrying Company. I wrote the report, well, actually, my historian wrote the report. I'm an architect, a preservation architect, and I looked quite a bit at the house, and I just, there's some question about the structural integrity, so I thought I could speak to it as well. I don't believe that Mr. Altamira's a structural engineer, and I don't believe his attorney is either, and I am not a structural engineer. I'm a preservation architect. However, I do have 40 years' experience in wood frame construction, and prior to being a preservation architect, I owned a construction company that specialized in wood frame construction. And I read the structural engineering report prior to visiting the site, and I was just shocked at the difference between the structural report and what I saw. The house is very, very sound. I saw one wall that was leaning slightly, but the house is all exposed, all the truss work, and you can see very clearly that it's very, very good condition. But the beauty of wood frame is that if it isn't in condition, it's reparable very easily. If you have a concrete, non-ductile structure and it doesn't have enough rebar, you've got a problem. If you've got some wood frame and it's a little bit out of plumb, it's pretty easy to put it right back in plumb and fix the foundations, jack things up. So the house is easily reparable. I was surprised at the structural engineer's report. It didn't, it didn't agree with what I saw there. In terms of the additions to the house, there were additions early on. They are reversible, they're very easily removed, so you could go back to the original house. But the beauty is, if you need the additions, as the attorney mentioned, you can leave them there, because the Secretary of the Interior standards doesn't force you to go back in time. You can work with what you have. So there's the option of leaving these additions on if they're needed, or removing them, which they're easily removable. They're very separate from the original structure. And so it's very easy to repair this house. I don't see any problem whatsoever with doing so. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Comment? Farmhouse? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public comment, bring it back to council for discussion, questions?
Actually, Mayor, if I may, I do have some questions for the representative from Carrying Company.
Okay.
If we can do that during the public hearing.
Sure. Questions?
Thank you for getting back up. So just to, I want to make sure I understand, you're not a structural engineer either, correct? So, but you're disagreeing with the structural engineer's report?
Right. I'm a preservation architect, so I specialize in historic buildings such as this building.
Okay. One thing you didn't speak to outside the report I wish you would address, because there still seems to be some uncertainty about the relationship with William Gibbs and this house. And there seems, that seems to be one of the critical criteria for determining the historic value of this. It's both the association with William Gibbs himself, and then it's also the historic integrity in the structure itself. So those two different issues, I think you spoke to the one, but can you, can you definitively say that there is a relationship with William Gibbs? Because it looks like we still don't have proof of that.
I was surprised until tonight that there was any question of that. I thought it was actually common knowledge, but I can certainly go back and look at the historian's research and verify that. But I did notice that his son would have been 16 to 18 years old when the house was built. So if it was just associated with son, and son was certainly very young to have built that house.
So what's your interpretation? If it's not directly associated with William Gibbs, does that then diminish its, or does it eliminate it from qualifying as a historic structure in your preservation opinion?
That's a good question, because the historian, Erica Schultz, who was in here this evening, had talked about the possible importance of the rest of the family as well, but because our fees were limited and we felt like it was, we shouldn't continue to research the family, because the association had been established.
If I, I'm just trying to clarify, because I feel like reading the report and seeing some of the comments in here, and I guess it's the structural engineer's comments, that that they're, the farmhouse is not significant, but you're saying that it is significant. So I'm getting a little confused about what the message is that you're representing through this report. And also, I'm trying to figure out the validity of some of the footnotes. It just sounds like some of this material, and I see that, you know, given Councilmember Moller has participated in the fact gathering for this report, but I'm just wondering, what is the validation of the accuracy of this information? I feel like we need to be hearing this from, you know, an official report. The structural engineer's report sounds like the most official unbiased report, so I guess I need you to convince me why your interpretation of the report is more accurate than...
Well, the structural engineer's report was on the integrity of the report, of the integrity of the structure.
Structure itself.
And as I said, I'm not a structural engineer. I was just surprised when I read the report, and having 40 years' experience with wood frame, going to the house and seeing that, I didn't see why this house, I mean, was not, was considered in poor structural condition. It looked like it was in very good structural condition to me. And so, but, but my report is based on the historic analysis as well, but it's also, we did a condition assessment as part of the report. So we went to the, we went to the house and spent several hours investigating the house and understanding it, and looking at the floors and the nails and the studs and the mudsils and so forth during our investigation.
So, and forgive me for not having the kind of experience that you have with preservation in historic buildings, but do you consider it appropriate to replace, or is it inappropriate to replicate, to try to repair and replicate, or replace and replicate the historic elements as opposed to trying to recreate them? Is there a difference? I mean, if it needs repair, is it different than rebuilding it?
Yes, it is. And there's something that's called historic fabric, and that is the actual materials physically that the house is made of. So the actual stud, those square nails, for instance, you know, the knob and tube wiring, they're all part of the history of the house. And the Secretary of the Interior standards say that you should repair rather than replace, and replace rather than redesign. So the first thing you do is say, what, what's broken here? It's not the whole house. Maybe the, maybe there's some dry rot in the sills. So you might have to epoxy inject the sills, or maybe replace part of the sill, or maybe replace the whole sill. So you do a whole analysis of what's, what really is wrong. Instead of saying, this is shot, you say, okay, what exactly is the problem here, and how can we repair it, leaving the most historic fabric intact?
Is there a percentage of need for repair? If the, if the house is in need of 80% repair, or is it 51% repair, it becomes a better idea to tear it down and replace it? Or what, is there an industry standard?
There's not really a percentage standard. It's more the condition, I would say, and it's kind of like pornography, you know? When you see it, that it's, I'm just thinking of all the rotten houses I've seen that are falling apart that really need to go, and this is not one of them.
Well, and that, I think you're probably understanding the difficulty, at least in my opinion, to evaluate this. It sounds like the two most significant issues that, that you are representing is, one, it's related to William Gibbs, and two... to William Gibbs, and, two, that it has element, structural elements of historic value. And your interpret, if I understand you correctly, the structural elements of historic value are of enough value, they should be repaired as opposed to replicated. Is that a fair statement?
Not, well, not exactly. There were, when we determined the significance, we looked at it three ways, and one of them was the Gibbs family. The second one was the fact that it is architecturally significant as a early farmhouse in Yanville. What we did is, we didn't have in the scope of this report, the ability to evaluate all of Yanville and analyze all the farmhouses. And in fact, we recommended that that should be done in the future. But what we were able to determine, based on talking to a number of people with experience in the city and have done previous surveys, such as Carol Poole from, that did an early survey of the county, that it is one of the few farmhouses in Yanville and that the other farmhouses seem to be, have about the same amount of integrity or much less integrity than this farmhouse. So, in other words, if Yanville were lined with totally intact farmhouses, then this would be of less significance. But because there are hardly any farmhouses of this vintage that have survived, and this one seems to have survived more and better than the other ones because the additions that it has are actually very reversible, you can just take them off, versus other ones who have added on to the point where you can't even see the original house. So, this house becomes more significant because there's less houses like it in Yanville. So, that was another part of our analysis. And then, the third part was the issue that was mentioned earlier, that the city of Yanville, or, I'm sorry, the town of Yanville was established at this residence, but it was established 45 years ago. And normally, we look at things when they're 50 years old to establish the significance. But knowing that it is significant for that reason and knowing that that time period is just around the corner, it's prudent to not demolish this at this time without doing further analysis about the fact that the town of Yanville was established within this house.
I apologize for flipping through these pages while you were talking, but I did finally find the paragraph I was looking for. In your significance and evaluation criterion, one, on page 18, it starts out by saying, "The farmhouse, although it does not appear to be eligible," and I'm going to paraphrase a little bit here, "for its association with broad trends in local history. It contributed to the general growth of the community, however, did not play a singular role in this development trend. It may, however, become eligible under this criteria for its association with the incorporation of Yanville." So, if I understand you correctly, you're saying basically, it's the best of what's left? It's not in great shape, but it's in good enough shape because it's one of the few that's still remaining?
Well, actually, there's a couple of different criteria that you're talking about at the same time. When you're looking at, when you're analyzing something for the National Register or the State Register, you look at a number of different criteria. One is events, so that's criterion one. And so, the event that took place in this house is the establishment of the town of Yanville. But that is not 45 years old. Now, that's different from the association, criteria two, which is association with people, and that's the Gibbs family. And then, criteria three is the architecture. So, that's its integrity as a vernacular farmhouse in Yanville. So, we've established it, significance under criterion two for people and criterion three for its architecture, and then, in a few years, it will be also eligible under criterion one. But it's not, as far as we know, eligible under the fourth criterion, but that's archaeology, so we won't find out until we'll start digging.
2015. Oh, okay. So, but I guess it gets back to an earlier question I had about, I mean, is this information just coming off the Internet? Is this coming from historical documents that can be verified? Because I've seen references to some unsigned documents that claim there were things happening in this house. And I understand if these historic events took place, that's great, I get it. I'm just trying to validate beyond hearsay.
I think that the one piece of hearsay was that the house has been moved and we could not establish that. So, that was the, I think that's probably what you're referring to because there was, someone had said the house had been moved or had been written down, but we didn't have any proof of that. So, we could, we concluded, we couldn't conclude that it had been moved.
Does it matter if it had or hadn't been moved?
It, it doesn't matter because there's several ways of establishing integrity and location is one of them, but we did establish that it had enough integrity regardless of whether it had been moved or not.
I'm looking at page seven, the top of page 17 about the incorporation of Yanville and the reference to Yanville Improvement Club meeting there and, you know, that attaching some of the historic value in terms of the incorporation of the town. Is that, and I'm seeing the footnotes, several personal communications, I guess I'm just trying to verify if this stuff is fact or if it can be substantiated.
Well, actually, it was Ella Gates who is alive today and was there, and we did some interviews with her regarding this matter. And the other thing that we conclude at the end of the report is, in addition to surveying some farmhouses, an oral history should be done at Ella Gates because of the, she has so much important information that it's, that's really important to sit down with Ella Gates because she's the one that was actually there. So, in 1965, there are witnesses, there are people still alive as opposed to 1887, that we can garnish this information from, so it's easily established.
I hope you don't think I'm, like, badgering you or anything.
Not at all.
All right. So, if I can, if I can try to summarize, there still seems to be a little question about whether William Gibbs, in fact, owned it, but assuming, is it your contention that any member of the Gibbs family makes this a historic?
No, actually, and actually, tonight was the first time I heard that there was an issue about the Gibbs family. But we, I had discussed with our historian, she felt the whole family may be significant, but it wasn't really within our scope and because we thought, well, Gibbs is significant enough that we don't have to continue to research this family. I can verify with her about this, this one issue that came up tonight, which I wasn't familiar with, but it is possible that the other members are significant, but I can't tell you at this time.
And just to summarize the last point, that you feel like the, while it's in disrepair, it's not beyond repair, and so, you feel like what has been established as historic value makes it worth preserving and repairing versus tearing down?
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate you trying to help me understand this and clarify things.
Certainly, happy to.
Anyone else have questions for the consultant?
I do.
Councilwoman Shilton?
I'm sorry. You know, some of my questions were certainly asked by the vice mayor, and I had noted in here that, you know, I was trying to think through this whole issue of, you know, the idea of William Gibbs and that he was, it says in your report on page 13 that he was a major landowner and erected several major commercial and residential buildings. And when I read that, my instantaneous thought was, that doesn't mean, you know, I live in a house built in the 70s by the DeVita family of Napa. I don't think that that makes it significant to them specifically. And I, I had that question of, here's basically a developer in the 1800s who developed a house. The only record that it says in here was that his son, his son sold it. So, I do think that's significant. I'm a little disappointed that wasn't asked more. And I say that because prior to tonight, I think that the concept that the house was moved was considered one of those facts of, I don't want to call it a fact, but people talk about, like, absolutely, this house was moved. So, I am a little surprised to find that it hadn't, or there's no necessarily any unequivocal record of that. Because it does say that you were, you were asking the question about moved resources for the National Register, that it says not considered for listing in the National Register if it's a moved property.
That's true.
When I read that, I was, you know, that's sort of, that's pretty definitive.
It is eligible, it can be eligible for the California Register, but it can't be for the National.
So, on that same line of thinking, it has to do with the incorporation of the town because I, I think it is the layered effect here of the idea that the town was incorporated in a house that has some level of significance prior to it. And we talk a lot about William Gibbs and the Veterans Home, et cetera, but that tie is tenuous to some degree. You know, I have established, you know, business licenses and, you know, a nonprofit foundation and the mail has to be sent somewhere and it was sent to my house. So, again, I'm not sure my DeVita-built house is now a historical property because I submitted those for the mail to come somewhere. And would the same thing apply that if this club, this group of people looking to incorporate the town, had a circulation at different people's house, you know, every three months, that all four of these people's houses now become historical in nature because of the incorporation of the town? I'm trying to decide the significance of a house where people met, the gates were important in that effort, for sure, but I bet they met at Bud and Barbara Gilinsky's house, so is that now because of this?
Well...
Is their house historical for that fact?
I believe that it wasn't just their meeting there, see, that was not the exception. It was also, I think that the, I believe in, I don't want to say anything that's not the case, but I believe that the, that it was incorporated in the house, that the papers were there and signed. I'm not, I'm...
That's what it said, yeah.
Yeah. So, that's a little bit different than sort of a social club meeting around and talking up the town.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think that that first piece of it is the Gibbs question is really important because then I really come down to the next question of, how significant was this location to the incorporation of the town? It played a significant historical role. And I, I think that it's, I was certainly, I don't think most people knew about this. I think it's interesting, but at the same time, I'm not sure that that designates it as a historical landmark for its own self, and maybe disagree with that, so...
Well, it's one of the three reasons that we felt the house was of significance. And again, it should be further studied and I'm sure there are enough people available that were there at the time that could establish the significance.
Any more questions for the consultant? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we have a chain of title to the property and actually, the multiple properties out, not only this site, but the Catholic Church site and some parcels to the north of this. And this was submitted after the report had been completed, and it goes all the way back to when it was owned by the Mexican government. So, it includes, among other things, the deeds, and I've been looking through these and I'm convinced that that parcel through here was variously called the Gibbs Farm, the Gibbs Home Place, and that we are talking about the same parcel that the Mobile Home Park is on. And it was owned not only by the son, but the father. And in the Gibbs family, back and forth for quite a few of these deeds, transferred Gibbs to Gibbs and to other parties.
Bob, for the record, can you read in that document so that that can be submitted and documented appropriately for tonight's public hearing?
This is a, an abstract of a chain of title going from, well, back to when it was a Rancho under the Mexican government up to a reconvenance to Davis, I think is the most recent one, which was in 1910. It goes up, it's recently, it's 1910.
Great. Thank you for that information. Anything else?
I just want to, on the, on the point of whether it was the son and the father, these documents were indicated.
That's good. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Moller, comments?
Um, yeah, actually, a lot of comments. When this first came up, I went back and looked at the original council decision that this was going to be preserved as kind of the gem of the Yanville Inn. And then, the applicant was coming and it seems like it was kind of the opposite, that now it wasn't any good and needed to be torn down. So, it really kind of piqued my curiosity. And I knew Rosemary Walters had lived there and just probably not that long ago, five, six years ago, I'm not really sure, you know, she lived there, it was pretty intact, the floors were there, there was a lot of, she told me stories about some great chandeliers and a lot of the old stuff that was still there, just, you know, five, six years ago. And she gave me some papers that said this kind of came with the house and some photographs. One of those had, it was just kind of typed up, she wasn't really sure where it came from. And then, I called Lee Hart. Everyone knows who Lee is, and he seems to be our local historian that's always around. And he told me that Ella Gates had lived there and she was still alive and well and living in Napa, and that is quite a fact. She's, I think, 89, looks like she's going on 50. I'm quite impressed with her. So, I called her up and just started talking, like, what do you know? Why can't you tell me about the house? And it was like reading this incredible novel about all these stories about how the town government was formed and how she did all that there and, you know, how her husband was the first elected mayor and all the stories about it was just, I just became more and more fascinated with the whole thing. And that's when this came up originally, I thought, well, I think we need to get some more information here because there seems to be all these little fascinating tidbits. And Ella and I actually got together and met with Michelle because she was also the first town clerk, and she told us even more of these stories. So, when Eric Schultz, from, once we hired Carrion Company, Eric Schultz gave me a call and I passed along all the documents I had to her and had given her a lot of photographs that Ella Gates had provided Michelle and I at our meeting. And I think that's the information that Carrion Company then explored in more depth to put together this report. So, it's quite a fascinating story. We might not have all the little tidbits here, but I think that I certainly believe that we've hired an expert in Carrion Company, and this is our job tonight is to determine if we're accepting their report. And I have no problem, based on what I know and the research that they've done, in agreeing to this resolution that we accept the conclusions and recommendations of this historic resource evaluation report prepared by Carrion Company.
Thank you for your comments. Councilwoman Shilton?
My thoughts here are fairly scattered, so I'll try to make some sense of them. You know, I, I'll just speak directly to one issue that I brought up last time that I'm really concerned about and have a problem with, which has to do with the building of the flood wall, the decision back then and looking into it to determine that it was not historically significant that was done, even as Mr. Altamira says... not historically significant, that was done, even as Mr. Altamira says, is something the town wanted to do. And then we come back, I guess, seven years later and questions come up. And now it's tremendously significant and needs to be saved. And I do have a problem with that. I can imagine being a property owner and being told one thing and then, you know, come down the road and something has changed. The flip side of that is that I think when the council, I wasn't on the council when this development agreement was originally done, is that I think nobody looked any further into that issue, although I think there was still a negative declaration on SEQA because of the impact. If this is a farmhouse, you don't build farmhouses in a city next to each other. You build farmhouses on farms. So the fact that there's now hotels and apartments and everything around it, you know, that probably does have a significant impact on the historical nature. And again, it was determined back then that it was not. Granted, the development agreement says it was going to be preserved. So I think that issue is a little bit more moot because if it's going to be preserved, then it's going to be preserved and that's a good thing. I would get back to the questions, you know, as you pointed out, the resolution before us, I guess is a question for staff, the resolution does not prove or deny the applicant's request to tear down this house. It has to do with this report. Is that correct? The applicant has asked to tear it down, but it doesn't in any way say in here that, I mean, I understand that if we don't do that, the existing development agreement just stands.
The presumption would be that if you accept the building as significant, that the Secretary of Interior Standards would apply to any renovation because now we have to make a SEQA determination of no significance. And in the face of the conclusion that it's historically significant, that would change the evaluation on the project. So the staff report included, or the resolution included one condition that said, "Accept the report." But tonight I've suggested that we include a second condition, that if you accept that report and the determination that it's significant, it should be preserved and it should be done to Secretary of Interior Standards.
Okay. So that being said, I think that there, you know, if I read through the report, you know, to me, and, you know, Bob has some, what I would consider new information that nobody really has had a chance to review, including the applicant and the historical consultant, has to do with a lot of in here what I consider to be might-be's or potential, et cetera. I feel like we bought a Corvette and we're going to say, hey, you know, in ten years, it's a historical Corvette and we should look at it. I am not willing to accept this report as a statement of yes, I agree with that because there are too many unanswered questions. They may be able to be more easily answered, but they didn't answer them to the degree at which I hoped for. And that's my conclusion at this point. I would like to see this, especially as Mrs. Hines said, geez, we don't want to draw this out any further, right? Either let's restore the farmhouse, let's not do it. But, you know, at this point, I think there's some interesting things there, but there's a lot of potentials. And I feel like this is from the perspective of, hey, we're making arguments to preserve it as opposed to, well, there's probably some good arguments not to. So I don't accept this report as the statement of the town.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor?
Well, I too am struggling with this because as I'm looking at the significance and evaluation language, I'm frustrated by language like, "The property does not appear to be eligible," or "There has been some question as to whether or not the house has been moved." There are a lot of maybes and, you know, vague statements of fact that make it very frustrating and difficult for me to draw conclusions. At one point I read it did not play a singular role in the development of the town. And then I see that there were potentially, you know, defining meetings and decisions made potentially in this house, potentially not in this house. And I feel bad that I was, you know, kind of unloading all my questions on you and you weren't even the person that wrote the report. But I share, I think, a lot of Councilmember Chilton's apprehension to embrace this because it is a significant impact on the applicant and the development agreement the town has already entered into. At the risk of delaying this further, I'm, at the end of my comments, I'm going to propose to council that we continue this to our next meeting on the twentieth because one of my frustrations is very specifically, in the previous conversations we've had about this property, we have asked to verify the ownership of this property. That was a critical piece. Now, I think we may have found that in the eleventh hour from staff, that there appears to be ownership by the Gibbs family. Does that alone make this a historic property? I struggle with that. And Councilmember Chilton made some of the comments that I would agree with, that then it becomes, well, let's assume it's historic. Is it in such disrepair that it should be torn down and replicated and acknowledged as historic, but not tried to preserve? And we have structural engineer that says one thing and then we have other testimony that conflicts with that. So I find it very difficult to be able to make a definitive opinion about this. I hesitate to reject the report out of hand, but I do have a hard time accepting the report because there are so many vagaries in here. So I'd be interested to hear what the mayor's comments are, but I'm going to propose after your comments, unless the council-
Whatever, whatever you say.
Unless, I mean, the council can certainly disagree with me, but I just kind of feel like it's still unsettled. And it's very frustrating that it's still unsettled. We've been dealing with this for many, many months and we still don't have the answer. So that might be the answer, that the answers aren't out there to be had. So then we just have to decide whose story do we want to take as fact.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. I too struggled with the report because there are too many vague statements in the report. It may be, or it appears to be eligible, or it may be eligible. And you, the staff, staff admits that it doesn't meet all the criterion and that it only meets, may meet. In the staff report, it says it may meet the criterion for number two and number three. So there's not enough solid evidence for me to form an opinion as to the historical significance of this property. That being said, I was here when we entered into the development agreement with Mr. Altamira. And George, the reason we changed the zoning on that property was because you did voluntarily offer to build thirty workforce housing units. We did reduce it to twenty-five workforce housing units. So that was the reason we rezoned that property so that you could expand your inn. At that time, you also agreed that you would restore that farmhouse. And what's it been, five years? So it's been sitting there unprotected from the elements for five years. And that may have contributed, I'm certain, to some of the dilapidation that's occurred over the past five years. So, but what we're really here to do tonight is to determine the historical significance of the property. And even the consultant says without further study, we don't, we won't have a definitive answer. So in anticipation of the vice mayor's motion, I can't, I can't accept, or I can't approve the resolution accepting the conclusions of the consultant of the historical nature of this house without more information. So I hate to postpone this any further, but until we can get a definitive answer, whether or not that house is of historical significance, I can't support the resolution.
Councilmember Chilton?
You just touched on an issue and Councilmember Mueller talked about some of the things that Rosemary Walters said, because she's talked to me about this house. And she talked about the, I believe she talked about like emlaid floors and she talked about chandeliers, et cetera. And I think that question of, you know, I mean, it's a house that's over a hundred years old, is the condition it's in today versus the condition it was when this was done, as you said, I think seems to have changed dramatically. And I, that, what has transpired under the ownership, the current ownership, I think is somewhat valuable to know from the perspective of if it's in bad enough shape to, it's too bad a shape to save, why is that? And neglect could be part of the reason. And I agree. I think that, you know, if I had signed an agreement five years ago and it was in terrible shape, I think I would have looked at that first before I said I wanted to preserve it. So that one piece kind of still sits out there, but I think would be interesting to know a little more information on.
Just a little bit of information clarification. One of the things, going back to the history and the council alluded to it in a little bit of your conversation, by the applicant's decision in two thousand and five and six to restore it, you actually avoided having to make a SEQA finding. So a SEQA finding would be required at this point. So that's an important consideration. And because the applicant did indicate and did sign a development agreement, you know, that's a material, a very significant material fact that would have perhaps had a whole different chain of events back in two thousand and five and six, if a different course was to have gone down. Just something for your all's consideration.
If I could ask a question on that, because it, I had thought the very same thing about SEQA. So I feel like there's probably enough information knowing SEQA that to kind of, for staff or the developer to come up with a good argument that yes, out of hand, that SEQA is not applying here, it would be very difficult to continue to tear down the house.
To tear down the house, you would have to do it. What I'm saying-
So my assumption is if that stays, is that the developer now has to do a SEQA report.
To remove it.
To remove it.
Require SEQA. SEQA was avoided because of the commitment by the developer to approve and, excuse me, to restore, therefore not having to go down the path of potentially addressing with how to mitigate the historic or cultural significance of the property because they agree that they were already going to do that.
If I could ask, maybe our town attorney could answer this when they're address it. Back in two thousand and three, when the flood wall was built, I'm not sure if this had been considered a historic structure, if SEQA would have applied in that scenario or if this has to do with FEMA specifically with their own rules. Because this is, I go back to this issue of when the town wanted something, the town said this wasn't a big deal. And it flips around and I go back to that two thousand and three and say, was this something that was done just kind of like, you know, eyes closed, we're going to make the argument because we haven't looked into it? What's, are there any ramifications there?
Well, what it sounds like to me is the applicant at the time, as part of his project proposal, was to maintain this house and not to demolish this house. And so therefore, as part of his project, considering the historical significance of demolishing the house was never considered. And so if that is now changing, which it would if the applicant is now proposing, then it would trigger that SEQA evaluation, at least the initial study which SEQA would require. And then any, if there are any potentially significant impacts, and then you'd have to follow the SEQA process, if that's what the proposal is. It sounds like, you know, I, my knowledge of the history of how this was entitled is incomplete, but it sounds like that analysis was never done at the beginning because the project itself provided for maintaining the structure and not demolishing it. So never had to get into those issues.
My question, the follow-up on that, really is previous to this development agreement, which was in two thousand and five. It's two thousand and three when the flood wall was built. Obviously, I wasn't on the council then, you weren't our town attorney. The, is there any impact of, you know, going and finding this information, which in some ways doesn't seem that difficult to find? Now, back in two thousand and three, the town made a determination that there was no historical significance. And now with, you know, a report even with a bunch of potentials in it, it seems like there's some questions. Is there any impact going back that far or is it-
Well, you know, really-
Best and reasonable supplier.
The, how SEQA will apply, is it applies to, it applies to projects. And so if there's something the town council is considering, a project that's being considered, that's when SEQA is triggered. So if, back in two thousand and three, if there was something under consideration, but it wasn't an actual project that was being considered, and then subsequently there's an actual project that is being considered, there may be different findings back then that don't, that are, that don't conform with the findings that are made now. And what SEQA would require if it was applied back in two thousand and three, if it would, if this study found that there were potentially significant impacts and there was mitigation to address those impacts, and those mitigation measures would carry forward. If there's another project that's proposed and the circumstances have changed or the findings have changed, the council's decisions and policies have changed, and as a result of that process, there's a different assessment of the impacts and a different mitigation that's proposed, then that would be in conformance with SEQA.
So I think that if your motion goes forward, I think that the applicant should also carefully consider the impacts of a change in SEQA because that's fairly substantive.
I also have some additional comments, too.
If I could just ask town attorney a follow-up question about mayor. Can we assume SEQA will research the historic nature of this property automatically as part of its evaluation of the project or not?
Well, specific to this project, what you have before you tonight is really not a, you don't really have a project or SEQA issue before you tonight. Because right now you have a development agreement, you have an entitled project. And so SEQA, at this point, is not really an issue. SEQA would become an issue when the amendment, when the applicant is actually seeking to have the amendment to the development agreement accomplished. Then in conjunction with reviewing that request for the amendment, then staff would have to do an initial study or some type of evaluation to see what are the environmental consequences of approving that amendment.
So if I were to reject this report, just based on the fact I feel like there's some, it's too inconclusive for me. If I were to make that statement, it's not like the farmhouse is torn down tomorrow. The farmhouse is still being preserved according to the existing development agreement. If the applicant wants to move forward with tearing it down and rebuilding it as a replica, that process hasn't even started yet. And if they do that, that's when the SEQA evaluation would kick in. So there's still the potential that through that process of trying to find out, can they tear it down, they may find out, no, you can't. It is truly significant based on either these criteria or others. So I guess I'm saying it for my own good and potentially for the public that a vote to not accept this report is not a vote to tear the farmhouse down. It is a, it's a vote, or to accept this is not to preserve the farmhouse in any other way than it already existed with the development agreement. This is just a document that is meant to try to verify the historic value of the property, but it doesn't change the status of the property.
That's right. That's a good summary. I mean, the development agreement is a legally binding contract. And so the terms of that contract are going to be binding, legally binding on the parties, applicant is one of the parties. So if that contract says the house needs to be preserved and cannot be demolished, that's a legally binding obligation. It cannot be avoided unless the contract is breached, you know, a breach of contract, a breach of the agreement, or through an amendment, which would have to go forward to the council and then the SEQA process would pick up in that review. This proposal, I think approval of this resolution would, staff can confirm this, but it would provide the standards that would have to be followed to maintain the house. And rejection of this resolution would not change the agreement. It wouldn't change the binding obligation to maintain the house under the development agreement, but that would have to come forward as an amendment to the development agreement.
So the existing development agreement has a level of restoration. This would potentially take it- take it up a notch to historic preservation level, which would, the assumption would be that would be a higher standard?
Well, I think staff could probably speak to the standard. I, I don't know what standard historic preservation, I mean, I, I'm just looking at it from a legal standpoint.
Right.
It's some standard that would be implemented by approval of this resolution, and if it's not, the resolution is not, not approved, I guess that may be a question what standard would apply to the restoration.
I think, I believe that turns on the determination of the building's historic significance. If, if it's found to be significant, then if it is, the building's rehabilitated under the Secretary of Interior guidelines, then under CEQA, that's considered sufficient mitigation, that is, is no longer of importance to need further study. But if it's found to not be historically significant, we're still under the operating rules we've been under, that it will be restored under the, whatever standards would apply under the development agreement. The development agreement did not necessarily require Secretary of Interior standards, because at the time, it wasn't deemed historic or significant. When the initial study was done for this project, the farmhouse was looked at on two counts. All of the information we had available to us was that it was not a listed building on the county's inventory, and we had the FEMA evaluation. Now, the FEMA evaluation was not evaluating the history and cultural significance of the building, it was evaluating the architectural significance of the building as it applied to the flood wall's effect on that. Will the flood wall affect this building that looks old, and is it architecturally significant to begin with? And the finding was that it was not architecturally significant. The, the report you're considering is the cultural significance of the building. So, the FEMA report, while it does, came to a conclusion that it was not significant, you have to understand that within the, the restricted ban that was evaluated under.
Okay.
So, where I think we go is that if, it, it kind of really hinges on the determination of cultural significance is what's under examination now, and if it's found to be culturally significant, then to rehabilitate the building under the secretary guidelines, that would then be invoked and, in order to find a CEQA mitigation or finding a non-significance.
And it's any one of the criteria, it doesn't have to be a multiple criteria, if we're, if it's determined to have any one of those levels of significance, then the historic preservation standards would apply.
I believe that's the standard, yes.
Yeah, that's correct. I understand earlier, the, you evaluate something for significance, there's four criteria, the National Register and the State, the four criteria, and if it's significant under any one of those criteria, then it's determined to be significant. So, you don't have to be at every, taking the event person, architecture, or archaeology.
And I'll, I'll also comment that when the initial study was done for the project, and we, we assembled the available information, which was the county inventory and this FEMA report, we are, it was just an exposition of the facts as we knew them, understanding the building was to be retained anyway.
Can I ask a follow-up question directly to this conversation? When I read through this resolution, it, it resolves one thing, which is that we accept the conclusion and recommendations of the Historical Resources Evaluation Report. This discussion makes it sound like, if I was Mr. Ultimatum Attorney right now, I'd be, I'd be freaking out, is it makes it sound like that we are going to all of a sudden say, you know what, this is historical, so therefore these preservation rules apply. It would be my belief, or my understanding coming into this, that that is not the case, that in fact, we have a master development agreement, it could just withdraw the application, it could say preservation of the farmhouse, which means, if it doesn't define in the development agreement what preservation is, then that could be tear down the house and leave the, leave the chimney, which is what people do when they do remodels of houses in town. So, I, I want to make sure that we're not under the impression that accepting the report puts all of these, this level of preservation onto this project most retroactively. Am I correct in saying that?
Well, you know, I think, you, I think you may be correct in saying that. I, to understand what, I think it would be important first to know exactly what does the development agreement provide in terms of obligations for preservation, and if the council's inclined, if this matter is going to be continued, then we can look at that language in the development agreement, and come back with our opinion on what actually the le, the current legal obligation under the development agreement is, and it could give you some frame of reference for, for most being proposed.
Thank you.
I have some additional-
Councilmember Muller?
-comments. Aside from this suggestion of adding on the condition to conform to the Secretary of the Interior standards, my, my view of this report is that several companies were interviewed, Carrion Company was selected by the staff, that the scope that they were asked to do in this report is pretty much outlined in the introduction. They were just asked to do a historic resource evaluation. It really didn't, you know, get into some of the comments we've made here. And when they did that, they have their summary of their findings, and it says, I agree that, it appear, it could appear that these are a bit of WAF words, because the first finding is that the house appears to be eligible for the California Historical Resource. And the way I read that is that they can't make that finding, you really need to submit an application, ask them, you know, based on, here's all of our data and our information, we think it is, do you agree? So, that's why the words are that it appears to be, because they can't really make that determination. And in their second finding, where they say, may also be eligible under criteria three for the type and character, they, it's, it's the same type of argument. They were not asked to make that, and, and you really have to submit documents to these agencies, you know, with your information to let them officially make the findings. That's why it says, appears to be, could be, possibly be, blah, blah, blah. And then also, the third one was, you know, what they're saying is that they can't historically, they, they can't make an evaluation of something because of its 50-year-old status until it becomes 50 years old. So, they just can't do that. So, based on what we told them, I think, to do in their scope, I, I think they really met that. So, and, in terms of just the first part of the resolution, I can accept that they're, based on the scope of what they were asked to do, they did that. Now, if we want to come back, so I, I still maintain that I can accept this, that they did their job, and this is the conclusion that they made, and so I have no problem with this report. If we want to ask them, or somebody else, to, to now go back and find additional information, like write a report that proves with documentation that this was William Gibbs' house, and, you know, write a report that proves one way or the other of this, we need to give them those, that scope and ask for someone to go back and do that. So, I think in context, again, just to summarize, what we asked them to do, they did, and that's why these WAF words are in here. So, I still maintain that I can accept this report, but if we want, with, you know, no other context other than that's what we're doing is accepting that report, but if we really need to make further determinations of whether we're going to tear the house down or not, and we need additional information, that's a separate thing we need to do. So, that's, that's my opinion.
I agree with you. The resolution, I read the resolution, say, yeah, you can accept the report, and I, the report is not a bad report, and yeah, you're absolutely right, they did what we asked them to do. And what they did is a result of the applicant coming before us with a master development and plan, requesting a master development plan amendment. And so, this is the result of that.
Right.
To, to determine the, the property's historical significance. So, the report doesn't really determine the property's historical significance, but the resolution says, this, the resolution is hereby adopted and becomes effective and in full force immediately upon adoption. Well, those are pretty hard terms to, for, I would assume, for the applicant to accept, because the recommendations are that the property be determined of historical significance. So, that's, those are contradictory terms, and, and-
And, yeah, and I agree, I don't know if I really even understand, too, but I do accept that item one, that we accept the conclusions and recommendations. I mean, these are experts, and they're just recommending that if you really want to, you know, go to the California Registry and try to get this registered, you know, that, that's, that's the next step. So, I agree with you that the resolution number two is hereby adopted, so we're, the only thing we're adopting is accepting the report and becomes effective. I, I don't really know the significance of that statement. Maybe the town attorney, I mean, what kind of full and immediate force upon adoption am I doing of accepting a report? I mean, what does that mean, other than accepting a report?
Well, I think it probably, it doesn't really mean anything. I think you, what you've touched on is, is what we're speaking to, is that the, this matter that's before you is not going to cause this to be demolished, or it's not going to really change the obligations under the development agreement. It's, adoption of this resolution would set forth the standards, or set forth, it's basically a finding that this is a, found to be historically in conformance with the report, with the recommendations of the report on. And so, that may have consequence for, for future actions on the property. If, if you've made this finding, that this, you've accepted this report, then that may set forth a path for future applications relating to this farmhouse.
So, would it be reasonable to say that what we're talking about here is asking for chapter two or an amendment to this report to see if findings can be made one way or the other about William Gibbs being an owner, and whatever else we determine, or whatever other questions we really need, one way or the other? Would we put this on hold and ask for an amendment?
It sounds like to me is, really what it comes down to is, do you accept this, the conclusions and recommendations of, of this report? And from what it sounds like to me, the consensus is that there are some questions that may need to be answered before the majority of council can accept those conclusions and recommendations. So, giving that direction to continue it and explore those issues further.
I'm going to make a motion now. I know we've had an extensive conversation, but I think it needs to be continued. I'm going to move that we continue it to Tuesday, July 20th, to give staff, and the applicant, and the reporting preservation experts time to definitively answer the questions that have been presented by council tonight, in addition to the ramifications of the existing development agreement.
I will, I'll second that, primarily based on the fact that I agree with some of your comments, but I, I think that if we'd been here several months ago and said, we're going to get a, I don't know how many long-page report, and it's not going to tell us if William Gibbs owned this house, or if he lived here, that to me is, is not sufficient yet. So, I will second that motion.
And I have one more com, I, I'm fine with that, too, if that's enough time for them to do what they need to do, and we're very clear about what it is we want them to do. Those are my only two, if we give them that.
My motion is to, to take this back up on July 20th. That's, we're continuing, by continuing this, this is also a burden on the applicant and the process. It's already well underway, so I feel like we've, we've given this enough time. It's, I'm expecting to make a decision on July 20th, so my motion stands.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion carries. Thank you. This matter is continued to July 20th for further consideration. Item 10, Public, Councilmember Dutton, can we bring him back in? Wake up, Bill. Item 10, Public Hearing, Use Permit Amendment, Cornerstone Cellars, Page Wine Cellars. Do we have a staff report?
The application before you is a use permit amendment submitted by Cornerstone Cellars to extend their closing hour of operation from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and they indicate that this is desirable because they recently, or they received customers in, in the tasting room at that time who would like to stay, so it would meet and address that need. As you know, when this use permit was originally approved, it was for Cornerstone Cellars and Page Wine Cellars for a joint wine tasting room, and that's how they originally operated. They have since split their business operations so that they share independent portions of the space, but they otherwise conform to all of the conditions of approval. And the reason Page is listed as a party to this amendment tonight is that it's still a single use permit that applies to the property. Staff evaluated if there would be impacts of this change in the hours of operation, and feels that this would be very minimal, given the fact that the use is entirely indoors, it's similar to other wine tasting rooms on, in the PC zoning district that close at 7:00 p.m. or later, and that it's distant from lodging establishments and other residential uses. The request to extend the hours of operation would have no impact on the parking, because it was evaluated on a one to two hundred and fifty square foot ratio when the project was originally approved. And so, while this may extend an hour of operation, it doesn't change the minimum number required. And so, staff is recommending approval of this request, subject to the conditions of approval that are contained in the resolution.
Thank you. Counsel, have any questions for staff? Questions?
I have a question. The 25% retail use, that is within each of the separate businesses.
Yes.
So, for the whole space, there's 50%, correct?
No.
Okay. So, the 25%, is it divided into 12.5 and 12.5 to get 25% for the whole space?
I would have to think those numbers over, but I think if we're talking about individual spaces with 25%, when we look at the whole, that's still 25% of the whole. It doesn't add up to create 50%.
Okay, so-
That's correct. The, what it is, is each operation is responsible for a minimum of 25%.
Any more questions? The applicant here?
Hi, my name is Craig Camp. I'm the managing partner of Cornerstone Cellars. We're making this request because it's all new businesses, it's a learning process, and what we've discovered is that with the hotels in town, we, there's a lot of people that are checking in at three or four or five o'clock, and then before they go out to dinner, they're, that's when they want to do their tasting in town. So, we're getting a surge of business late, and we've discovered this is an important revenue source for us. And I just want to reiterate that we are not interested in serving wines with a glass or becoming a wine bar in a sense, we are a wine tasting room looking to promote our wines for, for sale.
Thank you. Counsel, have any questions for the applicant?
Thanks.
Is anyone from the public wishing to comment on this matter this evening? Okay, close the public comment, bring it back to council for further discussion. How does council wish to proceed? Councilmember Muller?
Um, on, so it's just the, the Cornerstone will still maintain their hours according to the original agreement, and this is just amending the hours for the, for the Page. So, my thoughts, I, I have no problem with that at all, and I would just like to add, anytime any of these things come up, it's always a great opportunity for us to add the information, as the applicant has already expressed that they not be allowed to sell wine by the glass. So, I'd really like to, to see that in there. So, I'd really like to, to see that in there. Uh, other than that, um, I am also assuming that there will be a, um, whatever provisions in terms of special events and all that will also be maintained as in the original agreement. So, I think I would like to see some of those original things just kind of spelled out more clearly as it kind of goes, um, along with this resolution, and I just don't see them in there right now, and I don't have the all of them in front of me. So, th- those are the things that I would just like to see amended here, and we could just do it by suggesting that the staff take care of that, um, otherwise I'm fine with that.
Councilmember Chilton?
Well, I, I, I think you want to clarify something that was just made.
I did, I wanted to clarify a few things. Um, the conditions that we didn't, um, raise or modify in this resolution stay the same. And, um, while Page and Cornerstone had been approved to operate a joint tasting facility, they were only granted a maximum number of special events. So, now that they're operating independently, they're still bound by that total, and they need to work it out amongst themselves if they, um, who gets to hold those events and when. We don't want to get into the operation of their business relationship, we want to, um, ensure the terms of the use permit that applies to the total space. Um, and I did want to mention that it is Cornerstone that's making the request to change the hours of operation, but since this is a single use permit that applies to both Page and Cornerstone, we're suggesting hours of operation for, um, for both the, the businesses. Um, and it shouldn't impact their operation in any way, um, since Page gains access through Cornerstone, it can elect to stay open till seven or close at six if they want.
And then what about, um, putting a restriction in about, for wine by the glass? Aren't we taking that opportunity when anything comes up?
I think that's a great idea. We should, um, definitely include that. Especially since they've agreed to that, that's the model they want to, want to do for just-
And then just, I would be fine, just, you know, one sentence that refers back in this resolution to that other resolution number, that all those other conditions stay in place?
It, um, the first condition does. Resolution twenty-seven ninety-one and conditions of approval of that resolution are incorporated here by reference, unless they're modified.
Okay, I was looking at the, the top one. Okay, then that's the only one I'd-
I will also share with the council and the public that based on prior feedback, one of the new conditions is the annual monitoring fee.
Mm-hmm. And I saw that in there, and that's, I assume, sufficient to, to take care of that. So, that, that's my only, um, suggestion is we add whatever language, if we have official language, that, and since they've agreed to restrict any, for both companies, I guess we're doing that, restricting the wine by the glass, uh, I'm fine with it.
Councilmember Chilton?
First of all, I just want to say, I, um, completely agree, I thought that we should add that, uh, that condition of approval on the wine tasting by the glass, um, and I saw that, uh, monitoring fee, so I think spelling that out specifically is a good idea. Um, I don't want to go off too far, um, I, you know, the council generally has two unusual responsibilities, one is legislative and one is quasi judicial. My legislative, I'll say it again, I've said it for years, I think that there should be a uniform six PM closing time in town for wine tasting rooms. Um, the judicial side says, the council has always disagreed with that, and, um, this application meets the law as it stands, so I, I think it should be approved. I just think the overarching law should be changed.
Councilmember Dutton, any comments?
Well, I agree with everything that's been said so far. Just want to clarify or get clarification, you indicated that you would want to change both of the operations to seven o'clock.
Yes, because both operators work under this, a single use permit. They don't have separate conditions that apply to the separate businesses.
But they do have separate entrances though, I think, right?
Yes, but they are tied together in the sense that Page obtains ADA access through Cornerstone.
Oh, ADA access, okay.
And one other clarification on a use permit, just because the applicant, and this applies to a number of other uses throughout town, just because somebody's allowed to operate until X hours does not mean that they have to, that they choose in some cases to seasonally operate, or not necessarily based on business demand. Here, you're hearing from the applicant that says that that one hour is, uh, turning out to be significant. So, I just want to clarify that just because somebody has the ability to stay open to nine does not necessarily mean that they'll choose to do so, unless it makes economic sense for them to do so.
Vice Mayor?
I have no problem with the request. I think it's redundant and unnecessary to add the hours of, or the, uh, conditions of a wine tasting room. They have been thoroughly established in multiple meetings prior to this. I'm gonna support the request. If the rest of the council feels it's necessary to, to repeat those conditions of pouring to a tasting level, not a full glass, I'm gonna support the resolution either, but I think it's definitely unnecessary and redundant.
I agree with the comments made, including those of the vice mayor. Um, the applicant says he has no intentions of selling wine by the glass, it's not a wine bar, the use permit indicates, uh, that it is a tasting room, and that tastings will be poured, so, and with respect to the hours, I don't have a problem with that, but I do agree with Councilmember Chilton, um, there should be some sort of consistency, and looking at this chart, we're all over the board on this, um, in terms of hours of operation, and, uh, the thing that concerns me most is, I, I, I don't know how we ended up approving events from seven eight, seven PM to midnight, and, but there are several on there, and so they exist, but I don't think, uh, an event to midnight is necessary, but that's a topic for a different discussion. Um, so I'm comfortable with the resolution as it's stated.
Well, maybe we just need some clarification. I, uh, it was just my understanding that we really don't have a blanket policy because of the new change in the law of January one about pouring by the glass.
The council has historically included language in your conditional use permit that indicated that it was a tasting room only and tasting pours. So, that language is actually, and staff can correct me, but my recall is that language is one of the original conditions, because the council approved this particular request by Page and Cornerstone prior to that date, but I'll, I'll defer to staff to ensure that that, uh, limitation, but that has been a standard, uh, permit condition of this council in the time that I've been here.
Is that correct?
And they were approved for wine tasting?
Only?
Yes.
Correct.
Does it specifically, I mean, I don't see it here that it says, like for Corner, for Somerset, for example, wine tasting only, no sales by glass and bottle, and I think that Councilmember Mueller is correct, that we changed, I don't want to say changed the rule, the law changed, we were going to send people letters that, that they had to agree to, but we did say that we're gonna clean that up, because that's, that's a, I don't want to say it's a messy way to do it, but we have not consistently at all times in the past said, wine by the glass, we assumed that the ABC laws were going to apply, so I don't think it's redundant, I think it should be in there as a matter of fact.
And this doesn't specifically have the condition, no wine by the bottle glass?
Because that's a, that's a, a state law that would supersede any local laws, right?
Well, we, it was, it was more stringent.
Right, yeah.
It doesn't imply retroactively, though. Well- Well, remember, I want to bring everybody back on that. What happened is, we've allowed, if somebody wants to take advantage of the state law, they have to come in and amend their use permit.
Correct.
And to this date, nobody has done so yet, although we do have one project which is somewhat different that is considering that, and you heard from the applicant today that that's not what they're intending to do. So, they are, again, staying consistent with the terms and conditions of the town's conditional use permit that was approved, but that is something, anytime somebody comes back, we probably do need to confirm, and like you say, it's already in their approved conditions. Um, but, you know, if that is something you wanted to add, just for, again, clarity, at this date, you, you certainly can.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-eight ninety-seven dash ten, approving Cornerstone Cellars, Page Wine Cellars, use permit amendment for wine tasting and retail hours of operation from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM daily for the property located at sixty-five oh five Washington Street, Building C, with an additional condition of approval that only allows tasting by the glass, two ounce pour, not wine service by the glass.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? That motion carries. Thank you. Does council want to keep going and take a quick break? Okay. Okay. Item eleven, townwide forestation plan update. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you. Um, in the staff report, the update, uh, starts out with a review of some of the background of, uh, the content for inclusion that has been reviewed by the ZDRB and, uh, was reported to the council, uh, at a February meeting, and then it goes on to, um, lay out the, a suggested, um, procedure for preparing a plan that was, um, that's promoted by the International Society of Arbiculture, and that, that is the, um, goes to the bottom of the third page. And starting at the bottom of the third page is a sample table of contents that we would, uh, that I'm suggesting we look at for, uh, our plan. And within that table of contents, most of this work has been completed, uh, as far as the inventory, um, some of the, some of the, uh, content you haven't seen yet that, uh, talks about the benefits of the community forest, and it's fairly boilerplate. However, there's two items on this con, uh, table of contents I wanted to highlight tonight for discussion, and one of them is maintenance and financial responsibility, and the second one is a tree planting and management strategy. I'll, I'll also report in, uh, that the GIS system, uh, the heritage tree list has been entered into the GIS system and, which is a map with a database associated with it, and with the database, we can add new fields for, uh, maintenance of those trees and current condition of those trees, and keep that updated as we go. We can add new trees to it as well. The, the one thing I wanted to highlight for your attention is this question of financial responsibility. Right now, um, financial responsibility to trees is, uh, somewhat implicit, although not explicit, in our zoning and municipal code, uh, it belongs to the adjac, adjacent or adjoining property owner when the trees are located over the, in the public right of way. And the authority for this is, uh, under the Californ, uh, Fornia Code, um, Streets and Highways Code, the California Streets and Highways Code, Section fifty-six ten, and, um, they have a very broad definition of what the sidewalk area is. It includes the curb and the gutter, the sidewalk itself, the planting strip, the landscaping within the planting strip. So, and it assigns a responsibility for the maintenance of that, uh, area to the adjoining property owner. What I'm suggesting is in our, uh, unless the council wants to take a different direction, but I'm suggesting we make that very explicit in our code, our mini code of their responsibility. There's also the option available to the council to adopt an ordinance that extends, uh, the property owner's obligation to take on the liability or to, uh, expressly spells out the liability of, uh, that would result from an injury of a, um, an area that's not maintained and the sidewalk is raised, or there's a root or, or something, and it results in some, some injury. Um, and that's at your option. The, the last, so that's the direction we would be going on that, just more, uh, clarity on, on who's responsible, but there is one item that, um, goes back a few months, when a, that's in our ordinance that talks about a heritage tree, and, uh, if it's on a property, the property owner can, uh, petition the council for, um, assistance, for town assistance in the maintenance or removal, or whatever the case may be, of that tree, based on the financial hardship. There's very little explanation other than that offer, that if you have a fina, financial hardship and, uh, you can come to the town and request assistance, financial assistance. Well, that came up and, um, revealed the lack of criteria associated with that statement and how that's evaluated, and, um, there, it's absent, there, there are none in the Staff would be suggesting, under the new implementation ordinances, that we would eliminate that offer of financial assistance. Uh, if the council wants to retain that, that concept, then we're, we will need to come up with, uh, a list of qualifying, um, criteria for how that's determined. So, one of the things I, I would appreciate discussion on tonight would be, um, which direction the council would like to, uh, take that in. Last would be, uh, the second, uh, management strategy question is, we get tree removal permits fairly regularly, weekly, and when they come in and they want to remove a tree, a property owner, uh, commercial property owner, um, one of the standard things we request is they indicate what, what they're replacing it with. Sometimes it's a question of the tree is too close to a building and it's, it's buckling or affecting a foundation or a deck or something, and it may not be appropriate to, uh, replace it in that location, and that, that would get into our new in-lug fee that, uh, is mentioned at the front of the report, that will be included in, uh, the new provisions. However, this, this is a question more of the types of trees that people state they want to replace them with, and we're finding it's frequently pistachio trees, and we're getting concerned, we're getting this kind of monoculture of that, we're getting essentially one kind of tree, uh, being replaced everywhere. And what the suggestion here is, is that in the report, it describes, uh, dividing the town into, uh, zones, and these zones would include our public parks and open space areas, which are, tend to be more wide open, uh, street trees, and that would include areas adjacent to the public right of way where these trees on private property would overhang the, the, uh, public right of way. And there's already provisions in our current ordinance for, uh, restricting the type of trees that can be planted to overhang the public right of way. Uh, parking lot, pub, both public and private parking lots, and private property, residential and commercial. And what the idea here is, is to promote in our parks and open spaces a concept of replanting with native species, and specifically natives that are, um, adapted or native to Cal, Northern California, rather than just California natives, and there, there's several of those. Street trees is a, kind of a different question, and that zone, frequently the environmental setting and restrictions of the space available to plant, that's why you see a lot of pistachio long our, our trees, is they're adapted to those narrow strips, not a lot of irrigation available, uh, they limb up well, they're not getting hit by trucks, um, they can take, hardly any maintenance, the, they don't need to be fertilized or, um, so there's a number of conditions that they, they don't drop fruit, and they don't, they're not weak limbed and dropping limbs and litter, and, uh, they have minimal effect on uplifting sidewalks and, and curves. So, they're, they're actually in a, um, another list of invasive plants that, uh, would be prohibited in other towns, such as Santa Rosa, you, there aren't any plant on that list is prohibited, where here, there are street trees, because they're well adapted to our, our conditions along the streets. And that, you know, the fall color, they, they, they're shelly and nice. Um, there's other Mediterranean adapted species that would be suitable for, for that, those conditions as well, natives, like the oaks, that, there's not enough room for them frequently to survive in, along our streets. It'd be nice to have them, but we don't have the conditions, uh, available for them to grow, so we would want to perpetuate the natives in our larger areas of the parks and open space, and also that gets into the parking lots of trying to, those frequently have more area available, and try to, where appropriate, uh, use natives in parking lots, where the conditions of producing the shade canopy would be one consideration, and many of the other, uh, considerations that extend to street trees, uh, if they work in parking lots and don't uplift- lots and don't uplift the pavement and would be suitable there, we would give them preference over other types of trees. And then, private property, residential and commercial, and particularly in commercial, they're subject to design review when they come in, and that'll be looked at by the ZDRB. Under the new Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance, WELLO, there's this idea of a maximum applied water allowance. And so, you get, basically, on your parcel, you get X amount of water to use, and you can choose to use that water in a number of different ways. And they have these zones that are, have to be irrigated separately on separate manifolds. You can't mix zones. But you can select trees, you can select lawn, you can select fountains, but once you've reached your limit, that's it. So, there's, there's trees that are Mediterranean climate adapted, or California natives, of course, that, that would be consuming less water. And that's probably, in those cases, going to drive the selection of trees, that they're going to want to select plants that, where they can save water for use on other types of landscaping that would be more showy and more water consuming elsewhere on the property. So, that's the idea on that one, that we would designate these zones and then come up with appropriate plant lists for, for these different zones.
And also, one of the things that staff's working on with this approach is that we would anticipate the end product is also more useful and easier for the residents and the potential developer to use, because we'll try to make it much more perspective, where there'll be pictures, charts, so people can look at something and go, okay, I, I have a better feel for what I'm looking at and what it's going to do and achieve, and try to make it a little easier for people to understand the intent and how to go about implementing what we're trying to do.
Right. In the sample table of contents, if you look under, there's several appendix, appendices that will be, illustrations will be liberally used throughout those to indicate what the tree is like and what its habit is and a description of it.
So, what we're looking for tonight is, one, just a general, are you liking the framework that you've seen in the draft policy outline, realizing that some of that substance is going to obviously be put before you at a later date in a draft form? And then, as you heard from Bob, we would like a little bit of feedback from you on a few of those more substantive issues that have a few different options towards how staff could potentially write them.
Good. With respect to the liability issue, Matt, maybe you can answer this. Who is responsible for property damage or personal injury in a public right of way? Is that a shared liability, or is it either the public entity or the private property owner? Where the tree is located?
It's, it could be a shared liability, depending on where the tree is located and how the branches are. If it's, if it's on, if the tree is on public property, then it's a public liability.
Right. But, for example, our sidewalks are easements. If the, a branch on private property falls across a sidewalk and damages a car and injures a person, who's the ultimate, holds the ultimate responsibility?
The, the ultimate responsibility would be held by the owner of the property.
Property owner.
Although this, this city could be named as a defendant, but have indemnity against the owner who owns the property.
Right. Okay. Any more questions for staff?
Actually, Mayor Sausch, if I'm just following what you guys were talking about, a lot of people assume that an easement means that the town owns it. And in some cases, while I'm sharing this for the, the public's benefit, if you've been conditioned to provide an easement or plant something, that does not necessarily mean that it's not your responsibility to maintain it, it just becomes, it's in a public right of way unless it truly is the public property. So, just, you had a good line of questioning, and I just wanted to make sure that some people realize that that tree in front of their house is probably theirs and not the town's.
Well, I was thinking about the tree along the walking path behind Hopper Creek.
That's a very unique situation, which we, based on-
It's privately owned.
That is privately owned property, under which, under a very differently wording easement, the property owners transfer the maintenance and liability, responsibility to town that a previous council at that point in time accepted, which is not something we would prefer to do anymore.
Okay. Councilmember Chilton?
Just one question, clarification. You referenced the Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance. I'm racking my brain, not remembering the Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance. Is that a town ordinance, or is that state law that's-
It's statewide, and each municipality has the option to adopt their own. We are currently operating under the state model, and we, our plan, as other cities in the county, have the same plan to, at the time of the green building ordinance adoption, that will, that will be part of that. Part of the green building is water conservation, and we would pull that in and put consideration at the same time.
Okay.
So, we're, we're already operating under the state model. We have been since January 1st.
And I can just add, because we did that at the wake-up, it primarily relates to commercial and extremely large residential, much larger than any residential we have here.
We, we haven't had anyone trigger that, those thresholds yet.
Okay. We're not going to have a bureaucrat from Sacramento walking around counting trees in somebody's front yard saying, well, I think you're over your water.
It's, um-
It's coming. You're telling me it's coming?
It's only for a new development.
Quite a process, actually.
I'm sure it is. Okay. That's my only question.
Any other questions, comments?
No comments.
Recommendations? Anyone from the public want to make any comments on our townwide forestation plan? Okay. So, what about the issue of financial assistance?
I, I think with the whole complexity of that situation, I, I recommend we just kind of strike that language moving forward. You, you going to go through each one one at a time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or, yeah, we can do that.
I'll wait till you, there might be questions to get in.
I was going to agree with that. I think we should strike that. I'm going to make a comment that you talked about financial responsibility in general, Bob, and I thought the financial assistance part should be taken out. And, and I've mentioned this in the past, and I would like to see it incorporated, I think it would be a good thing, is to figure out what, what level of notice is required for a property owner to understand. And I think one thing we get out of this is, there's always talk about, well, Topper Creek, and we're not exactly sure whose property it is. I think we need to clarify those things. And I think if it's a heritage tree, you know, when you, and I don't know if the town has any ability to require this, the town attorney could look into it, is when you buy a house, I think that you should have to be disclosed on those disclosure forms, like everything else that's disclosed, that says, you have a heritage tree, and these are the responsibilities that you are undertaking, so if you can't afford to do that, don't buy this house. And so, people can't say, oh, I had no idea, and the town's making you do this. And I think it's, you know, it's reasonable, taking down some of these big trees is very expensive. So, what I don't want to do is incent people to not spend that money and just wait for it to come crashing down. But clarifying the liability, clarifying whose it is, I think putting in that liability piece helps with that financial assistance area, taking that out. Those other pieces need to happen with it.
Councilmember Dutton, any comments on?
Well, first off, I was glad to hear, Bob, that people are getting permits to cut trees down. That's a step in the right direction. I, I agree. I think the financial assistance could be waived out, especially since apparently it's never even come into effect, except for the one instance I'm aware of. Did you want to comment on the others, or are we just doing that? Yeah. So, I, well, I do agree with, along with the clarification, I, I think as town manager said, as far as responsibility, sidewalks, easement, it's still your responsibility. We have had some instances where we paid out some significant money, you know, where they're, where we were at fault. So, I would hope that we would clarify that in there. And also, as far as your, the zones, I agree, yeah, that's a good idea, I think, as far as that zones, I think that sets up some criteria for the people when they're, you know, going to plant the trees and what goes best in there. So, I agree with that.
Okay. Any comments?
Yes. I hesitate to, I understand the, the thought behind eliminating the hardship language, but I find it, and I agree with Councilmember Chilton about, from here on, disclosure, I think, is appropriate, and then there's no issue. I worry about all the folks that already have homeownership and have heritage trees that we tell they have to maintain at their expense, and they can't cut down unless we say it's okay, and then they can cut them down at their expense. So, I would, I would at least like to see some kind of attempt at language to keep in the hardship, because I just feel like it's unfair to the folks that we're going to set a standard now that now they're completely 100% financially obligated if they have an issue. And we might be able to fairly quickly determine how many heritage oak trees on property we have. Maybe it's send a letter out to all those owners and say, just to make sure you are responsible for this, if you have any issue with that, you're going to need to prove to some degree. And again, I don't know what the language is, but I think being proactive-
Well, I think, Vice Mayor, that's a, we have, we know where the trees are. That's not the issue. The issue here is what's, what necessitates financial hardship? And there's no guidelines there, and what level of, of information or verification? Are we just going to take somebody writing a letter that says, I don't have the money to do it? You know, that's, that's the real struggle that staff has, is how would we interpret that?
That's why I'm proposing that we put some language together in a letter, and if we have 10 people come, you know, respond, I have a financial hardship if this tree falls down, then we know that we need to come up with some exact language of what is a hardship? What does it take to qualify? I just think if we're proactive, then we could quickly get to the level that Councilmember Chilton was referring to, that I totally agree with, which is, from here on out, anytime a property changes ownership, that's got to be one of the things that people know. So, just to touch on all the other issues, I, I, I find myself in a total agreement with your proposals here, Bob. I was a little concerned when you start getting into the maximum applied water allowance, because I worry that some people might be trying to do the right thing in terms of water conservation, and may not know when they're exceeding the allowances. So, as long as it's fairly explicit that what people can be doing and watering, I think your structure here, though, explaining what are more drought tolerant species and that type of thing will probably satisfy that. But I support everything you're proposing. I, I wouldn't give up on that hardship language immediately. That's just my, my opinion.
I agree with the Vice Mayor in that regard. We've designated some rather substantial and, and old, old oak trees, heritage oak trees on private property as, as heritage trees. And, and to, to just assume that the owners of those, the property owners can assume and afford to assume the liability for the maintenance and care for those trees is, is pretty presumptuous, although if I had a tree on my property, I would assume that I was, would be responsible for it. But I, I would agree that we, we should craft some kind of language to, to address that issue. And, yeah, I like the idea of sending out letters to the private property owners who have heritage trees on their property, explaining to them what our intentions are and what we're doing by this, creating this forestation plan. But the financial assistance, it's, that's, that's a tough nut to crack. And I agree, we would need some very explicit language to, to address those issues. And I also, I'll just go ahead and throw in my last comments, and then you guys can wrap it up. In terms of the, the in-lu fees versus the replacement, that's an excellent idea. And having that, having the list of the different species that we can, that folks can use when they're re-landscaping their properties or new landscaping is coming in is, is a good idea, as far as recommended trees and, and providing them with care, maintenance, and care guidelines would be, would be beneficial as well. So, I like the whole layout of the plan. I like what you've done, and I think the only thing that I'm concerned about is, because we've designated so many of these big old oaks as heritage trees, and many of them are on private property, and we have experienced in the past year or so, problems with them, we should be, we should do something to both protect the town and protect the, the property owners. Councilmember Chilton, do you have some more comments?
Yeah, a couple of other things. I, I thought the idea of an in-lu fee is a good one. I think it should be an in-lu fee, provided the concept of replacement is still applied. I just don't want it to be a $500 fee, essentially, to just cut down a tree. I don't want it to become that way. So, if a property owner wants to take down a tree and replace it with, you know, with an approved or a reasonable tree, then I think that's a good way to go. I think most people want trees on their property, think it enhances their, their property value. So, I think as long as that option still exists, if we're adding an option for an in-lu fee, I think that's positive. One thing that we, you know, it's kind of referenced in here a little bit, has to do, I've had this concern since, since Bill Permett came back with it, had to do with the concept of what species of trees are included. He saw a couple of, of trees, and the coast redwoods are actually referenced in here as something that, we don't get rid of the ones that exist, but we don't, they're not really appropriate for yonder, so we don't try to plant more, is I want to be sure that we, I personally believe we should be expanding the types of trees that are covered under heritage trees. We may have already done that, and I didn't like it, but I, I think, I just want to be, I want to bring that issue up of carefully making sure that we're not going to start expanding those, those, those species as part of this necessarily. That should be a separate discussion, in my opinion. And I, I think that the, I'm going to go back, the financial assistance concept, my, my thought on the gentleman who applied for financial assistance is, it seemed to me that he wanted us to help him take down that tree. And I think if the town council says, you've got a heritage tree that you have shown is dangerous, but we don't want you to take it down, then the council needs to be reasonable and help with that. If the council says, you know what, it's a heritage tree, but you've shown that this is, this is, you know, a problem, and you want to take it down, go for it, then it's your tree. So, I think it's the situation where we put additional burden on the property owner, and this is not a new thing, and the heritage tree ordinance has been around for years and years. So, that, that burden exists today. And I think that that councils in the future should simply take that into account when they're doing that. And again, I would take the financial assistance clause out.
Councilmember Mueller, do you have more comments?
Yeah, no, so, I, I agree, I think I started the financial responsibility, I think it's just going to be cleaner with that out, and it sounds like we've got agreement with that. It's just, it could be, I can just dollar sign through going in my head, but that's not clear page after page, and it just really doesn't work. Exceptions are always made if something comes up, and I think we'll just kind of deal with it that way. And the, the sidewalk part in here, I, I like this, and I think it just really needs to be clear about, you know, some definitions, maybe what we're talking about, what we're not talking about. Also, I totally agree with Councilmember Chilton, I don't want to expand all these list of trees that, you know, are going to go in here and to that end, when you're putting all this together, I'd really like to advise you that as much as the town staff can do on this, and only have the arborist really review final important tree details, so what I'm saying is, don't spend a lot of money on the arborist when you're putting this together. Only what he really critically has to look at. And in terms of the management strategy, I'm pretty much okay with how you kind of put this in here and just, you know, really limiting the amount of expanding the trees. I, I just don't think we need that. Again, if something comes up, kind of case by case, if somebody just has to have this certain type of tree, and they can make a good case for it, I'm willing to look at exceptions, but I, I think we need this nice and tight so that somebody can follow the rules, figure out what they are first. That's it.
Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor?
Sorry, just one last question. Bob, do you think it's appropriate in this context to address the issue of joint property ownership of a tree? Now, you referenced the idea of tree public property, you know, private and public property, but when, and we've had issues where it straddled two private property lines and-
Yeah.
There's some, I think there's already a loose process in place, but there seems to be some discrepancy.
We can incorporate shared situations.
Actually, it's, it's kind of like a property boundary issue between two property owners at, at town. We can suggest that it's really an issue between the two owners.
But it also relates, we have some trees in public right of way that straddle unincorporated.
If we're one of the owners, then yes, we can get the clarification and what happens in those cases.
Good point. Anything else? Staff have sufficient direction?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Item 13, Nicklog. Do we have-
No, no, no.
Oops, sorry.
You're trying to jump ahead quickly. We're going to give Bob a break today.
Item 12.
This is a continuation item of discussion that the council had started a while back, which was the development of a town naming policy for various facilities. The council formed an ad hoc committee consisting of council members Chilton and Mueller and worked with staff. And we've developed a draft recommendation policy for you. Briefly, the purpose is to establish a systemic and consistent approach for the official naming of parks, recreational areas, facilities and other town facilities. What we're really looking at is to ensure that there's a formal written policy that you go through. And I won't go due to the hour of the night, all the details. But basically, the ad hoc committee looked at, you know, some typical standards, local geography, the name, streets, possibility that something could be named after a person. Then we had the issue discussion of deceased, living, some various factors. And then we also included a section, section three of the policy relates to memorials, which are slightly different than when the town formally names a park, a facility, or a room, or a section. And I think the council was correct in assessing that before it moved forward with discussing some of the potential naming issues, that it was appropriate to have a written policy. We've also developed a nomination form so that if somebody wishes to suggest that something be named after a person, that there's a process that's initiated. From a policy standpoint, if the council adopts this program, it's also recommended that the program initially be worked on by the Parks and Community Services Commission, and then they make a recommendation to the full council. With that, I'm sure that the two ad hoc council members can add or comment in more detail on some of the discussions related to the draft policy.
Good. Council, have any questions for staff or the ad hoc committee?
I'm just making a couple of comments.
These guys, you have any questions?
I'm going to, I'd like to reserve it until they-
Okay.
If they have any collaboration.
Okay. Councilmember Chilton?
Well, one thing I wanted to, to clarify and also get a clarification from staff, just reading this, being on the subcommittee, one of my, I had one real primary concern, which is, is, well, two. One is, is that I, I do consider the naming of a, a public space building, anything that's publicly owned to be fairly serious issue because it's public funds that went to naming that, or to building that, and it's not for the glorification of an individual. Which is, the second piece is that these can be, I think, highly political and for the self-aggrandizement and/or political paybacks or et cetera. That happens, seems like more in Washington and Yountville, which is good. But our town is named after a significant person in our, in our history. So, you know, the idea that we should not do it, I don't think is valid, but we should be careful. Under, on, on, I guess it's page three of the policy, if you go to the procedure, section 1B, and we talked about this at some length, had to do with how a request is initiated. And my primary concern was, was that town staff, as a, acting as town staff, would not be put under pressure by somebody to, to carry sort of the torch forward and make the argument for naming a park or a building or anything after someone or for someone. But that should be done either by a council member, a member of the public, and we listed those folks, a council member, Parks and Community Services Commission member, or the commission as a whole. A public individual or community group could come forward. But it's not somebody that goes to Steve and says, "I think Bob Smith was a great guy and Steve, you really need to do something about this." That's not Steve's role. That person needs to go out and make the argument and, and take that to Parks and Service Community Commission. And they stand up there and say, "This is, is why this needs to happen." That does not preclude, we talked about it, doesn't preclude town staff as a member of the community to say that, "I think this person deserves it," but I don't think they sit at these tables. They stand up there and, and make, make that argument. I noticed that the procedure 1B is listed under the initial naming. And I, I didn't know if it needs to be repeated in the renaming, part two and part three, because it, it doesn't specifically reference who brings that for. So I think that, I think that simply needs to be repeated since this is a draft. And those other two scenarios of this is who brings this for to the Parks and Community Services Commission as a start.
That's a good point.
And that's, overall, I want to really commend particularly Steve. I, I do think it's, you know, we talked about, let's keep it simple and not do anything too, and it's still five pages long. But you start to understand how a healthcare bill can be 2,000 pages long. So I, but I, you know, Steve really, really put out the, the first drafts and I know they did some, staff did some research, so I want to commend him on that. It didn't take a whole lot of effort on our part. I don't know if you want to add some more comments or suggestions.
Councilmember Mueller?
No, so I just really wanted just to point out that this is the, the background information to which the nomination form will be attached. So when somebody wants to start the process, they will get this whole document so they can see what our thinking is behind the criteria and will help aid them in filling out the form. And I don't know if there's going to be a, a staff person that's going to help them with that because certainly if they, you know, fill out their name and phone number and then say, illustrate a reason, it's like, you know, "He was a great guy," it's not going to get very far. So, you know, I, I think they, they really need to put some time and thought in, into this as it moves up the food chain to get evaluated. So there might be some, hopefully they can understand all that from the text that will be associated with the form. But it will have some pretty significant criteria once we start naming things. So it's not just going to be a five-minute form to fill out.
Right. Vice Mayor, questions? Bill, you have any questions?
Any questions? I'll just make some comments.
Okay. Do you have questions, John?
Yeah, and I'm not sure if they're questions or comments, but I'll ask them. I'll deflect my voice upward at the end and make it sound like a question. Do we, I don't see any reference in here to, in terms of dedication, the cost, recovery, that an individual needs to, is it installation? Is there going to be a level of maintenance involved if there's an item? Because I, I have a specific problem if we're going, once we get to it, with items 3E, F and G on page five. I don't know if you want to go into that right now, Mayor, but it goes to my question about, should there be a, an element here about if somebody, you know, private person comes, wants to have something named, dedicated, and a contribution is given for that, is there, should there be additional contribution to cover the care or maintenance? What if somebody dedicates something and it breaks? And then the, the language I read here is, if it breaks or it dies, you lose it. The town is not obligated to replace it. And I don't think that that's appropriate. So-
Sir, how would you change that? What is approved?
Well, I think if, if it, if something is accepted as a donation, Adam, I think the town takes on an obligation to maintain that, at least to a degree. And item 3E, it says, "If a plaque or object cannot continue to be reasonably maintained, it may be removed by the town." I think maybe at least some language in there about the, you know, private individual may assume responsibility for that maintenance or something to that effect. I just think it'd be, be unfortunate if somebody were to dedicate something and not know that it broke or was in disrepair and it was just subsequently removed and they weren't even given the opportunity to maintain it.
To the first part on Vice Mayor Dunbar, section D talks about the fact that that is the responsibility of the requister to provide funding. Now, the question is going to be what level of funding? I mean, for example, a bench has a useful life. A tree has a useful life, although that depends on the nature of the tree that's selected. You know, some trees might have a 25-year life cycle. And I think the intent that we had here was that for expansion, where it says, "The tree or plant's going to be provided with the normal care and maintenance that the town would do." But that, kind of to your point, you know, if, if somebody provides the funding for a 25-year lifecycle tree and it hits that life cycle, it's not going to be incumbent on the town to continue replacing it. Certainly, there's no intent on the part of the town to take something and not maintain it in good repair. But for example, if somebody donates a, a TV, you know, the TV is going to have, you know, a, a natural life cycle or the, the use of it. And that town's not necessarily responsible to go out in seven years and buy a replacement TV for the one that was donated. So it is hard for us to write probably 100% language on some of these things. But we're trying to say, you know, good quality care, the town standard, as well as whatever the memorial is, because sometimes it could be a small plaque. We also have to be real careful that, you know, people can't go buy us a bench from Orchard, Hardware, or Home Depot and assume that we're going to be able to put it in the park and have a dedication plaque for 50 bucks, because that isn't going to work. So we, we did struggle a bit with that in trying to come up with some guidelines, but I think your concerns are real valid.
Well, I'm thinking, just again, mine's a little more hypothetical than your scenario possibly, but if we were to get into naming the pavers in the courtyard, just again, hypothetically, or plaques on a wall, this language to me says that if one of those things gets damaged, it goes away and you're not necessarily required to replace it with the name or the quality that was there before.
Well, I, I think that's, I think that's true, actually. I mean, the, sort of playing the balancing act of, you don't want to discourage people from giving something to the town that's useful because they have to then contribute more money to make it, you know, put a maintenance fund or flip-flop. You don't want the town to say, "No, we don't want to accept that because it creates an undue liability to the town because we do not have this, this thing we have to maintain." I have a, I might, I don't know if I do. I had a brick in Atlanta with my name on it down there at the Olympic Square. But, you know, there's, you know, that was done for an event and if someday they go in and tear that out, they might do it. And I don't think that, you know, the city of Atlanta should have a liability to me because of that. I think it's, I think the goal was to create reasonable level of expectation, which is, we're going to treat your stuff like it's our stuff. But at the same time, let's keep it simple and not have a tracking system and have to notify people or make them pay more money to donate things, et cetera. I think it was just a, a reasonable standard would apply. And that could be controversial at times. And I know like the Founder's Rock and its location has been controversial at times. But, you know, just work through those things.
The other thing I was going to point out, and I totally understand what you're saying, I just happen to have a little disagreement about it. The other thing I thought of is, should there be a four-fifth or unanimous voting threshold, especially for naming? If we're talking about these things being potentially in perpetuity, I think it should be, now unanimous might be too high a bar because then you basically give the power of the minority, that if one person is against the idea, they can then, you know, draw the whole issue. So a four-fifth still requires obviously a supermajority. Then just the last comment I was going, I had written down was, should there be an appeals process? And I, I don't necessarily advocate for this, but it's just something that popped in my head when I was reviewing it. Should it be an appeal process if the vote happens, it's voted down, does that individual have an opportunity to go to anybody else? I mean, they've had to go through, I think, the Parks and Community Services and the council.
Can I ask, really pardon me, but who would you appeal the council's decision to?
In this case, again, just hypothetically, if there is a-
I know, I'm just trying to help you. You've asked me to occasionally be succinct and in this one case, I just want to remind everybody, you be the end. Because it starts with a public body and if you put a four-fifth vote, you know, the only other opportunity that I would say is if it was denied, somebody could resubmit it at a different point with a different council and see if that-
I just had the thought of a, some kind of citizens' appeals board, but I think with the Parks and Community Services already in place, that can act that way.
That was the intent, was that's your sounding board, yep.
You're sticking out of the box.
An idea.
It's a good thing. It's not like we've been flooded with requests for dedication. You have any comments, John? Any more comments?
Well, no, I, I think it's well done and I applaud the effort of everybody that went into this and certainly the comments also. The one thing, and I guess that would be down when the rubber meets the road, but, you know, we are a small town. And, you know, when this, you just made the comment, "We're not flooded." Well, something like this may open the floodgates. And, and I would really be a caution about, you know, just plastering the town with plaques and all these type of things. Because there are, as you know, certain people, organizations is what they live on. You know, they, they want to get those out there. So, and I guess that'll just come down to the whole process. So that would be the only fear I would have, in a sense, to Councilmember Chilton's comments about a public building. It's a very serious thing when you do that. If you're going to put somebody's name on there in perpetuity, you're, you know, you're really saying something. So I think that process. But when you get to the other, you know, little plaque or this or that, all of a sudden, you're like, "Oh my God, we got 500 of them here in this town that's a mile long." You might be overdoing it. But there again, I know there isn't anything in there to it, but that's certainly the process would take care of that, hopefully.
On that note, would these dedications, plaques, products, whatever, have to conform with our current zoning and design standards? I mean, shouldn't they?
Well, I, I mean, I, I mean, like for a bench, Steve made the point, you can't give one, go down to Ace Hardware and say-
Right.
Here it is. We do have these official bench standards. They're like the metal ones out at the Bocchi Court. So-
That, that's something. I mean, there's, there's criteria. I mean, they need to be made aware of the criteria that, that dictates-
What I would say-
The nature of the dedication.
Right. And I think that's something that we would evaluate also. For example, if it's a bench, then the plaque can go on the bench and there's certain things. It also may be like if the community center, we create a wall plaque and if people donate a, a ping-pong table or something, then we have a little recognition chart where things like that go in. If somebody plants a tree, we might have a marker that goes with the tree. So again, it's not a one-size-fits-all and we will have to include the cost of the marker or identification in what's necessary to provide that acknowledgement. Because otherwise we will not be achieving the end result. we will not be achieving the end result.
And it's going to have to be some flexibility as we kind of move through this. I mean, we don't want benches popping up in, you know, Yountville Park like tasting rooms, you know, 50 of them sitting out there or something. So I think it's just something we're going to have to kind of work through as things come up.
I think we would want to look at standardizing benches. There's a whole, that whole category, it's called street furniture, and it could include garbage cans and all kinds of other things, that we would want to have that standardized if it's going in parks or...
No, you're absolutely right.
Also put together a guidebook, because what it is, is, you know, the same thing with a ping-pong table. We need to make sure that we're going to get one that's commercial grade, because, you know, kids that are going to regularly use it, it just can't be something that's not going to be fitting with what the town needs. The same with the plant material, the landscaping, you know, we're not going to just put the tree in, it's going to have to match the new tree policy. So, but we also want to be creative. We don't want to limit, you know, the fact that the only memorial is trees, because frankly, we're running out of spot for trees, in all honesty, in some locations, and you only need so many benches. But I think this allows us some flexibility. But what I would say is, any request needs to be reviewed and approved by staff, and if it's in an area that's new, it's probably going to come to the council for some feedback, or at least go to the Park and Rec Commission for some vetting as to if this is appropriate. And I think we can come up with a common, you know, some common things that people have expressed an interest in.
Well, I want to say, John, that I very much support your four-fifth clause concept, and I think that what that, I think it does, you know, I think the process, and we're talking about that form, it does put that little extra burden on to say that, you know, this needs to be obvious and, you know, if somebody comes and says, "I want to put in a new bench," well, okay, then you can do that, but if you want to rename an existing bench, then, you know, the town can deal with that as it comes. But I think the four-fifth clause makes a lot of sense.
One other question I had for staff is, does this include the art walk and the signage? And if not, why not?
A, it does not, because B, you adopted a separate policy that governs the art walk, and that policy that the council adopted, and the signage for the art walk would be consistent with that program. And the plaque sponsorship ironically is very similar, because in that particular case, the donors of the plaques were responsible for the initial cost and the installation for those plaques. So it's somewhat consistent, but we're keeping, you've adopted a art walk program, and all the stuff for the art walk will stay in that program.
So a service group could pay for the installation of a plaque along the art walk, for example?
Correct. And there will be probably opportunities coming forward in the future for, you know, if people are interested, certainly they can let us know, and we'll let them know if an opportunity comes up and they want to be, you know, our committee will be happy to contact folks that I'm sure will be interested in supporting the expansion of the art walk. So I am hearing a, from the council, that we will add to the town council in its sole discretion, that we'll add language that a four-fifth vote of the town council is required. And I will also duplicate language on, submit to add another component to section two renaming of parks existing, if that's consistent with the council's direction.
I didn't understand what you just said.
Does that mean that section one B is going to be repeated in two and three?
Correct.
All right, now I understand.
Is there anyone from the public that wants to comment on this, Matt?
Yes.
Sure, thinking, I'll be very quick. Thank you, as Councilman Dutton said, "Thank you for the hard work that went into this." Because it's, I think it's fabulous, and it makes it consistent. And you've got, you've got to be able to more than say, "This is somebody who was really neat and they needed a garbage can aimed after them," or "Who was really appropriately needed a garbage can aimed after them, but some thought needs to go into it, and thank you for the hard work."
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2898-10, approving, establishing a formal policy for parks, recreation areas, and facilities, naming and dedication and memorials policies, policy with the changes as outlined by the town manager.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Post, none of that motion carries. Thank you. Now, item 13, NICLOG, League of County, Napa County League of Governments. Do we have a staff report?
Real briefly, the issue here is to advise you that one of the discussions coming forward with NICLOG is going to be the current policy that limits the meal cost at $40. And Michelle and I can attest to you that as the occasional people that have to put together this dinner event, we really can't do it in Yountville for $40, including meal, gratuity, and service. So NICLOG will be coming up with a policy discussion to look at raising it. We don't know what the recommendation is going to be, but likely somewhere between $40 and $55. The interest here was basically for you all to provide some feedback, so that when a vote is potentially taken, we'll know. Michelle's, it's our understanding that this has actually been pulled from the NICLOG agenda. We still wanted to brief you on what the issue is, so that you could give us some feedback. But, like I say, it's very challenging to do a inclusive, you know, salad, entree, light dessert, coffee, tea, room, facility, service, and tax and gratuity for $40 inclusive.
Counsel, have any questions or thoughts on that one?
I have thoughts. I'm absolutely fine with raising it to whatever people think are reasonable. I know it's going to be a lot more to do things in Yountville, but I also think that when attendance comes up, we need to come back and revisit. We, you know, really want to stick with our, what we've budgeted for the town council. We don't need to send five council members and five staff at $65 a plate to every single event, so...
We've already had that discussion at the staff level, and the recommendation from the manager of the staff is that they need to prioritize their attendance and maybe one a year or something like that. And obviously with the council, that's a slightly different, because this is obviously a more of a council-oriented, but we're not recommending any budget change, so we will need to manage that particular outcome with that, if it goes to $55.
Right, so as these NICLOG meetings come up and we move through the year with our budget, if somebody can just let us know, when you blanket the emails, you get eight responses, up, you know, we're really limited to five, or figure out a system, so we don't... And, you know, I think we should be reporting back, not only to those of us who didn't attend, but also the public, what we, what we have to say and what we learned there. Under Quick Counsel Member Meeting and Comments section.
No, I generally agree. I think that $40 is generally woefully inadequate if you take into account the different things, particularly the fact that usually you're taking a room at some facility, hotel, or restaurant. So, you know, if it was 55, it's 60, I think that makes sense. I do think that NICLOG is very valuable and important, and I don't think that, I don't think we should be foolish to limit council member attendance, or honestly, a lot of staff attendance, as much as possible, over a couple of hundred dollars, because I think that the networking piece of that within the county is very important. Should be managed with reason, but we shouldn't be miserly for no reason, so I'm fine with that.
Counselmember Dutton?
Well, I think it's in the budget. I think if you just look at the budget and, you know, go to there, it's pretty easy. You can probably figure out how many meetings you're going to have and divide it by that up, and, you know, you just sort of keep a running total where you stand, and it doesn't seem like it's too difficult.
I think the point of clarification is, for this upcoming budget year, fiscal year, it's at the $40 per person, per attendance. So this year, we'd have to monitor it, and certainly next fiscal year, we would adjust for the actual cost, so it is included. So this change came after the adoption of our budget.
Vice Mayor?
I agree that it's important that we have this networking opportunity. I would suggest we rotate staff, so that there is, if we need, depending on how high they're talking about the maximum being, that maybe we have staff rotate their attendance. But I think as much as the council can attend and interact with other electeds, I think it's important.
Yeah, I agree. NICLOG's important. We cover some interesting topics and important issues, so my first thought was that the individual council member or staff person make up the difference, but we've already budgeted for the year, so we know what we've got to spend. I'm surprised that they came to us with this request after everyone's fiscal year. And so, you know, I can go either way, but obviously with, given the constraints of our currently approved budget, we'll have to work within those, within that criteria. Is there anyone from the public want to comment on this?
Mayor, in that vein, I think I owe everybody an apology. We're using one of those government acronyms that we all know what it means, and I just realized...
Napa County League of Governments.
We failed to share that, so I want everybody to realize that this is a local base in the local officials, that interaction.
Okay. What do we have to do? Staff have sufficient direction? Good. Okay, item 14, staff informational reports. I don't see any. Item 15, council member meeting reports and comments. Napa County Flood Control did not meet today. Yountville Elementary School.
Well, I'll just say a very quick thing, I'll let the Vice Mayor make her comment probably as well. We've had some discussions, we're aiming for some resolution, really by, let's say by the end of this month, but I think by the time school starts. But the new superintendent, Patrick Sweeney, Dr. Patrick Sweeney, started on July 1st, so there's going to be some transition, and I'm sure he's got a lot to do, and we're trying to set up another meeting with him. Do you want to mention the Bouchon event on the 14th?
How about, could you comment about the status of the Yountville School Fund, and then I'll make that follow-up?
Part of this entire effort is establishing a independent nonprofit foundation, the Yountville School Foundation, which will be charged with raising funds, not only to quote-unquote "save the school," but also to further the educational needs and keep Yountville Elementary School a great school. We've gotten the first round of approvals from the state, and there's some additional forms that I filed, that's what I was talking about before. I filed nonprofit forms with my home address on it, just like the Artful Incorporated for the town, where filed with somebody's address, so please don't make my house a historical site. So anyway, so that is moving forward, and in conjunction with that, with some of the effort of the Vice Mayor, next Wednesday, July 14th, is Bastille Day, and I think a lot of people would know, but if you don't know, Bouchon puts on a really nice event every year, and the proceeds of that event are going to be donated to the effort for the school and the school foundation. So come out and enjoy some music and crepes and other things that you do on Bastille Day. But thank you very much in advance to Chef Keller and all the folks at Bouchon who are making this happen.
And I'll just follow up on that, that the foundation is really the critical tool that we're, has been created that we're using. We're not risking town funds through the process that we're negotiating right now, and we're extremely close to a complete agreement. We're just wanting to be extremely clear on the exposure to both sides. And our goal is to have the school board hear this on July 29th at their next meeting, so we're hoping that those few variables are nailed down between now and then. And details are still to come. I think the Yountville Sun will probably be able to give some details about the Bastille Day event, but they were very gracious to quickly collaborate when they heard about this effort. They already wanted to donate to the school, so I think that's going to be an immediate, kind of a kicking off of the foundation, so we get some money in the bank, so more to follow on that.
Good, good news. Any more reports?
I just had a question. So the foundation, you say money in the bank, so do you have a bank yet, or?
No, we do not.
Okay, so that'll occur once the foundation's established.
The IRS is giving us our number, probably, I mean, we're going to give us this week the tax ID number for one, and I'll start that next piece.
Yes, I have another comment, speaking of money. Obviously, once we pass the budget, I have heard from numerous people, obviously, and I'm sure some of you are quite upset about the library situation, and essentially I'd tell them, you know, it was ludicrous to give them, "We felt that money," almost like they were holding a gun to your head, type of thing. But that being said, I would hope that somehow we can explore every means possible to create more hours for that library somehow. And I don't know whether it's going to take, I hate to say, another ad hoc committee. I guarantee you, there's a lot of citizens out there that would do some legwork. I'm sure the town manager knows all the intricacies about the financing and what have you, but, you know, it's, I was telling somebody the other day, you shouldn't even, you should have shades on those windows, because when it's closed and they're open, it's sort of like telling a kid, "Here's the candy shop, but you can't go in." Maybe, yeah, a couple of days from now, you can get in. It's really sad, so I would hope that we could get going soon and not later on something to this, because I think it's quite important. We spend a lot of money doing that. I think there's a community need for it, there's Community One, I think there's a community willingness to join in the effort to get, you know, anything done. I just can't accept the fact that we have to live with that. And if that's, if we've explored everything and that's the way it is, fine, but we certainly haven't done that. So I would really throw it out that we should be doing something to see what some of the alternatives are for increasing the number of hours that we can have there.
I'd just like to follow on with that. I was just, today I sent a letter in to Sharon at the Yountville Sun with a little paragraph that I wrote up, picking off what I call the COOL campaign, starting with K-O-O-L, which means to keep our library open. Keep, yeah, no, I tried COOL, but it came out cool. Keep our open library. And so, when I thoroughly went back through their report, and what I saw was that it is, and we talked about this, it's a, "We get hours based on how many things we check out." The circulation revenue-based model. And it said in there that in 2008, 2009, we checked out over 29,000 items. So what I'm encouraging everybody to do in the letter is get behind the COOL campaign and go to the library and check out videos and books and read to your neighbors. So I really can't, and I put a call in, I can't really get any real number, if we go from 29,000 to 45,000 items, how many more hours we get. But based on their contract and their model, the more we check out, the more hours we're going to get, because they actually raised our hours based on our circulation from 16 to 17 and a half. So I think that's one thing that everybody in town can at least feel like they're doing something, and really get in there, and it's great summer, and you can read to your friends and neighbors and check stuff out. So I don't know how it's going to work, but I think it is something that we can probably all embrace.
And you do, you make a good point, because it is circulation-based, but only being open three days a week limits our circulation, so it's kind of, we're in a kind of a catch-22 situation here, where, you know, with limited hours, it's difficult, and it's difficult for all the demographics across the board, working parents, that sort of thing, to go to the library, utilize the services, given the hours that it's open. So I think we can start by modifying those hours and... So, I think we can start by modifying those hours and, and work on the circulation as well.
Take a big bag, you can check out a lot of stuff.
You can check out fifty books.
You can check out lots of stuff. If you don't get them all read by that next day, take them back and check some more out. So, I'm just saying, it's, I'm not saying we want to abuse it, but we really want to encourage, you know, checking out because that is how we get our hours.
Well, I'm, I'm going to follow up on that too because my initial thought was, you know, I was talking to some folks and I said, "You know, I don't want to, I don't want to," I think the word "abuse it" was right, and then the more I talk to people, and we had this discussion when they were here, is the way this is being done is mind-boggling and it's simply wrong. And I'm going to say it that way. Some consultant came up with something and it does not match reality of what we should be paying for additional hours. And I want to point out, library you're listening, we have seventeen thousand dollars budgeted right now. We want to give it to you, but it doesn't make sense for an hour a year at two-hundred-and-ten dollars per hour and that's not what the additional variable costs, variable costs, go look it up in a book, it will be spelt properly and I'm like, "Cool." And I, I think that actually, I hate to say it, blow up that system because that system is not correct. And I'm sorry they spent a lot of money on it, but that's, it just, it's, it's not the way to do additional hour pricing. It's wrong. So, go out and check out some books.
Thank you. COOL campaign, doesn't make sense. Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, one last thing, I just wanted to mention, right next to the library that will be closed, Thursday night, July eighth, the next artist reception from the Yountville Arts Committee to introduce some of the new photography that's hanging in the gallery, which will be open. So, people, please stop by there, maybe before or after or in between the chamber mixer, if that's also on your agenda, but stop by and see some of your local artists.
And the League of Governments meeting as well. Okay, anything else? Any other reports and comments?
What time is that, artist? Six to eight.
All right.
Live music, food and wine.
Be there. Item sixteen, future agenda items, public safety quarterly reports, Rossi Jessup rezone and concept use proposals, zoning and design review board, interviews and appointments. We have no need for closed session. Item seventeen, adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned to Tuesday, July twentieth at six P.M. Thank you.